Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting has been webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons in the course of this meeting and the statements of those individuals are not of counsel. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Counsel accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for the instructions from the general manager and council offices. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is in the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the Wanarua peoples as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respect to elders past, present and future, and I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Sessnock local government area. We now have the opening prayer. Pastor Rachel Main, could all stand for the prayer?
Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Lord God, we invite your presence into this space tonight. Lord, we ask a blessing over every person who lives in our beautiful city and works to contribute to its betterness. Lord God, we know that your word says that where there is unity, you command a blessing. And so while there are different opinions and different points of view presented tonight in the meeting's agenda, we just pray that above all else, we as a community of people would strive for unity. And so, Lord, we ask your blessing on the proceedings of tonight over these councillors and staff, and we ask that you would make Sessnock an even greater place for us to live and bring up our families. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Main. So I believe we've got no apologies tonight and no leave of absence, no audio visual link. Sorry, just councillor Judge before we move on to you. You're okay? No problem. Confirmation of previous minutes. Could I have someone moving that way? Councillor Lee, seconded. Councillor Madden, all now vote on it? All in favour? Unanimous? Disclosures of interest? Any disclosures tonight? Councillor Jade?
Okay, sorry, I'm a little bit slow in filling out my paperwork. I was too busy doing other things. But anyway, so I have got a conflict of interest on report one, oh, WI two slash twenty twenty five, the draft waste resource strategy, what I believe is a conflict of interest, non peculiary interest, due less than significant conflict for the reason that family work there, and I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting as the conflict has no influence on me. Also, the report, where is it? CC twelve slash twenty twenty five, the community, you know, if I got authorization to borrow. So I'm going to do non peculiary interest, less than significant conflict for the reason that family work at one of the areas that we want to borrow money from. I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting as a conflict has no influence in me carrying out my public duty. Is this also well if we want to put in for leave now or are you doing that next?
Yeah, we can go back to it.
Okay, yes, sorry, because I haven't done it before. All my time I have not put in for leave. So I think that's why I clicked the buzzer and then I wasn't expecting it. So for the fourteenth of April, the traffic committee and also the sixteenth of April council meeting.
Okay, now someone move. Councillor Saval, seconded councillor King, all in favour? Unanimous? Okay, now going back to disclosures of interest, or there's no other leave while we're sitting there? Okay, councillor Pomalski.
I would like to disclose a conflict of interest, report number PE five two zero two five, the exhibition of draft infrastructure contributions plan. It is a non pecuniary, less than significant conflict of interest. I reside in the Huntley estate. However, the report is on the new development, so therefore it does not influence me carrying out my public duty, and I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion.
Okay, thank you councillor Pomalski. Any petitions tonight? No petitions. There's no speakers tonight. Now on to englobo voting list. Have someone moving that way? Councillor Lee speaking? Councillor Hill, yeah, speaking.
So moving that having read and considered the reports in the agenda related to items NI one two zero two five, CC fourteen two thousand twenty five and CC fifteen two thousand twenty five, council adopt the recommendations as printed in the business papers for those items.
Now vote on that. All in favour? Unanimous? Now, moving on to merrill minute, so MM one twenty twenty five. So just to read out the recommendations of this, and I did circulate this before with hopefully enough notice for everyone to hopefully ask questions that they need. So recommendation one, that council writes to Transport for New South Wales requesting a review of the Sessnock LGA public transport network and investigate improved, efficient local public transport options to implement for our growing community. And then recommendation number two, that council write to the Honourable Jenny Atchison, MP, Minister for Regional Transport and Roads, and local members of parliament for priority action for the acquisition of the rail corridor so it can be preserved for future transport functionality. Now, the reason for this is, that's in the report, so the Hunter Strategic Regional Integrated Transport Plan, that was recently on exhibition, plans to reimagine how we can reconnect, or sorry, connect our communities, support improved roads, public transport connections between housing and jobs, education and healthcare across new sustainable growth areas from day one. I'm sure we're all in agreement here that our community is rapidly growing. We're the second fastest growing LGA in New South Wales, and I believe the eleventh from the last count that I saw in Australia wide. So we're growing rapidly. So with regards to, in the report, the Honourable Jenny Atchison, MP for New South Wales, the New South Wales Minister for Regional Transport and Roads, in the foreword of this report, the minister advised that the Transport for New South Wales, or T F N S W, would support sustainable growth and housing by expanding public transport options that align with population increases and enhance multimodal connections to mass transit, particularly by improving access for pedestrians and cyclists. This approach will improve transport choices, fostering a vibrant and livable Hunter region. The Sessnock LGA public transport network is not sufficient for our community's current needs. And I want to labour on that for just one moment because in an area where we're so widespread, we live in an LGA where we're effectively siloed, and if, you know, we're not careful, we will continue to be distant from one another. And we're talking about people that can't drive, people that don't have access to any regular transport. So this is a major issue, not just for a growing community, but for accessibility wide and wise. So I believe there are significant challenges for our existing public transport system to meet the growing needs of our community. So Transport for New South Wales are responsible for regulating public transport, regulating public and private bus services across New South Wales. Doesn't fall on council, I just want to iterate that and make that clear. I suggest we request Transport for New South Wales prioritise planning and investigation of our current and future public transport needs to public connected and accessible services between Sessnock and Bellbird, Brangston, Greeter, Currie and Maitland. Additionally, and a big point here to consider, is the existing heavy rail corridor between Sessnock and Maitland may provide the opportunity to future-proof the city's growing transport needs. So I recommend with this minute that council ask Transport for New South Wales to acquire the corridor and not just keep it sitting there really doing nothing, acquire the corridor to preserve it for a future transport benefit and need. So I've got councillor Hill. Yep?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I think that the intent behind this merrill minute is very good. I think that's a huge need that our community has to advocate for transport needs. I note that the plan submission period is closed, and so this is another good way for us to continue our advocacy to Jenny Atchison. I would also just note very briefly, I'll try to quickly just take off a few things. I note the council made a submission to the plan when it was on public exhibition, and that was made to try to highlight some of council's concerns. A few of the things, I think especially that you've noted as well, that council included in those submissions addressed issues such as the lack of commitment to the acquisition of things like the rail line here in the Sessnock to Maitland corridor. The plan currently, it has a shortfall in the way in which it addresses its intents for rail corridors in the plan, and making note that they suggest that they're only suitable for cycleways and rail trails, whereas I think the need for our community is that the corridor is preserved for any type of transport need that we may deem sort of is required for the area. Other notes that it made as well, it was in regards to sort of the lack of attention to our regional airport. So Sessnock council, here's one of the only LGAs with a sort of regionally, who runs their own regional airport in their LGA, and yet the plan failed to identify our airport as like a key transport or tourism or infrastructure node. Additionally, and I think most importantly to your point about public and active transport, the plan didn't include certain initiatives that I think our council desperately like to see in the plan, things such as increasing the services between Sessnock, Currie and Maitland for bus services, increasing express services to Newcastle via the expressway, and things to help advocate for and progress active transport routes like the Shirazdeshaw and the Richmond Vale rail trail. I think something that might also seem less relevant at a large scale look at this report, that I think council was correct in identifying in our submission that we made, was that the plan fails to note important intersections and sort of key transition points across our LGA such as the Maitland Road, Old Maitland Road intersection, which council has been eager to see signalised for some time and has continued to express that need in our submission. So I think alongside the submission that council has already made to this plan, I think further advocacy can never hurt us.
Thank you councillor Hill. Councillor Jade?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to share my thoughts. I went to a presentation at Abermain on the twenty first of May two thousand twenty four regarding the return of the train service to Sessnock. Initially, I went because I was sceptical about it being feasibility due to perceived high cost and low usage. However, after listening to Bill, now please bear with me if I say his name wrong, Pal, Palazy, Palazy? Yeah, okay. I'm never going to get it. Information, informative presentation, I realised the costs are much more manageable than I had anticipated. Wasn't one's resident story, though, particularly from a lady that worked from Maitland Hospital, who can no longer drive due to health issues, resonated with me. She highlighted the challenges of navigating multiple bus schedules to get to work, which made me reflect on the accessibility in issues faced by many. This presentation shifted my perspective, and I'm now fully supportive of the merrill minute tonight. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jade. Councillor Saval?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Look, the context of the merrill minute and where it's heading, I think that like we've just heard from councillor Hill tell us that we've actually already written and we've actually already asked all of these things. So if we want to do something, we probably need to ask for a sit down meeting with Transport for New South Wales and actually have a discussion with them, maybe invite them to a briefing night where the whole of council, we can actually talk to them and talk through the issues because another letter, like we've already written this and said exactly what we want in a letter to them. So I think it's something we should consider about whether it's amended to change that. And instead of writing to both of these people, we might just ask Transport for, to come and have a chat with us where we can actually talk about these things. I will note that in the title of the Honourable Jenny Atchison, MP, she's now the Minister for Roads and Regional Transport, so she doesn't just look after regional roads, she now looks after the whole portfolio across the state. The other things that I, I've too had the briefing from the train to Sessnock people, and I've taken the view that it, while it's a very good proposal they've put forward, very detailed, and they've put a lot of time into it, and I thank them for their work and what they want to see as improvement to our community. But I think the costings of what they're proposing, I think, are well underdone. I think it's, as we know with building any projects, I think to get this line going, the upgrades to the stations, the things, you wouldn't be doing it for probably less than a billion dollars. Look at how much some of these trains are happening across other parts of the local government area, sorry, other parts of the state. So you're talking huge amounts of money. And I think if you went out to our community and said, you're asking the state government to give us a billion dollars in our area, I think there's probably a long stack of things that would sit a lot higher than a train. I think the first thing they'd be saying is we'd love the investment in the hospital, we'd want investment in roads, we'd want investment in schools. There's things that we could be asking for long before we do, we talk about a train. And the, because trains are very good at getting people from where they live to where they work and back home again. They do a fantastic job at that. But we need to ask ourselves, we've got the population here, we've got people that live here, but where do they work? Where are they catching that train to? We run buses to Maitland Station, we run buses to the things, we could run a hundred buses today, a day, every fifteen minutes, and you wouldn't have it. What we're, would be better off doing, and mind you, those, the train that come from here would not go to Maitland Hospital. There's no train station at Maitland Hospital, it would not go to John Hunter Hospital, it would not go to Green Hill Shopping Centre for any of the places that people drive to and want to get to. So buses, in the first instance, I think would make a lot more sense of actually running the routes to where people need it, because there should be a bus route that goes from Sessnock through to Maitland Hospital. And it could include Green Hills on the way through there. So there's, that's what we need to be looking at. There's a lot more flexibility, a lot less cost. And we need to look at where the people are actually working. Where are people working? Because are they going from Sessnock to jobs that are within walking distance of that train line where there's a station? And I'm not sure the population density that's predicted actually would cover that. So I think there's a lot more things we could do and a lot more we could prioritise before we focused on out there spruiking for a train.
Yeah, thank you councillors Saval for your input. Just to clarify, not here to advocate or, you know, look for trains per se, we're just looking at the corridor itself. So, and to make it clear, it's not for council to take that on. We don't want to jump in knee deep with that kind of investment. Public transport would, whatever the option might be, and we could have debates about that another time, could be another notice of motion, could be another merrill minute, whatever it might be. But the fact is, this is about securing that corridor, because if we don't secure it, it's going to go and then it's useless to everything and everyone. So the corridor is the main point here. You mentioned buses and a hundred percent, we do need a review on buses, but just want to clarify, I'm not here to necessarily sprukey it either or, just the corridor itself. Thank you. So councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. So Jay, are you asking there for a point three for to also write to the minister in parliament to actually attend a briefing meeting for question time? Is that, because you did mention an extra point, but it wasn't actually discussed.
Councillor Saval?
Yeah, so what I was suggesting was rather than write to Transport for New South Wales and write to the Honourable Jenny Atchison, we could maybe council request a meeting or a briefing with Transport for New South Wales in the first instance, because we have already written that letter to Transport for New South Wales and the plan that they've done. So we've already done that first step. Now it should be about meetings. So I would sort of combine the points and say that we request a meeting or a briefing with them. But that was my, that was a thought as a suggestion to the mayor if that was something he wanted to consider.
Yeah, thank you councillor Madden and councillors Saval. So just with regards to that, so yes, the submission did mention those topics, but it was more of an open ended policy discussion. The merrill minute's more about requesting action rather than postulating about what potentially could be done. So the fact that we want to write for action and then, you know, maybe we can look at a potential further notice of motion or a merrill minute to request a briefing. And I believe the Honourable Jenny Atchison has reached out before and she's happy to brief councillors. I think it'd be of benefit to have her in the room regardless, so we can talk about everything to do with the LGA, maybe not specifically this matter aligned. So to me, they're two separate matters. So I just want to clarify. No, no further speakers? No? Okay, well, we'll put it now to a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Now moving on to motions of urgency. Is there any motions of urgency? Councillors Saval?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. My motion is that council, one, notes its concern with the way political signage is managed in the Sessnock LGA. Two, requests the general manager urgently review the procedure or policy with the intention of implementing a revised policy before the twenty twenty five federal election. Three, requests the new procedure or policy. A, provide clarity to political candidates around the requirements for election signage display in our LGA. B, bring the way political signage is managed in our LGA into line with other LGAs across the Hunter region. C, implement a more reasonable fine structure for incorrectly placed signage. And D, ensures council continues to monitor and ensure the removal of illegal signage across the LGA.
So seconded. Councillor King? So effectively, point of order, councillor King?
I just want to clarify whether this motion is actually urgent, because the election hasn't even been called yet.
Yeah.
So I haven't got to that point, I needed seconded first.
Yeah. So I've considered the motion, so it comes down to decision of the chair and...
I haven't said why I think it's urgent yet, though. Do you want me, I just read out the motion?
Sure. Yep. Sorry councillors Saval, here, continue.
Sorry, I was just waiting for it to be seconded before I got to that, that point. Oh, so no second for this point? Okay. So, okay, well, the reason I think it's urgent and why it needs to be dealt with tonight is that if we want this policy in place before the next election, so we need it in place to deal with signage going into the federal election, if we don't deal with it at tonight's meeting, once we get to the April meeting, the election's already been called, because at the last date, it can be called is the seventeenth of May, and five weeks before that puts us before the next council meeting. So the only opportunity council staff have to actually do something about this and try and resolve the matter in a way that can better serve the needs of the community really, is by doing something about it now. So if it's not dealt with now, then it won't be dealt with prior to the election. So that's the reason I've moved that it's urgent to deal with before tonight.
Yeah, thank you councillor Saval. In my opinion, it doesn't actually meet the criteria of a motion of urgency. So, yeah, we'll have to move on with the meeting. So, but thank you.
Am I allowed to move a dissent in the ruling there?
No. Thank you councillors Saval. Okay, now we'll move on to report number PE three slash twenty twenty five. So the development application number eight slash two thousand twenty three slash two nine eight slash one for food and drink premises comprising a pub and silo brewery, restaurant, cafe, associated car parking and on sites, affluent disposable at fifty four thirty nine George Downs Drive, Buckety. Can I have someone moving that way? Councillor Hill, seconded. Councillor Pascoe? Any discussion? Councillor Hill?
I'll reserve my right of reply.
Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got just a couple of issues that's still unresolved for me. I'd like to ask a few questions first. First one's to the general manager, if I may. I just want to ask whether there's any concern, and I'm not asking you to form a legal opinion, just with the information that was provided to us, is there any reason to believe that this DA before us tonight is not lawful?
General Manager?
Thank you councillor King through, Mr. Mayor. No, I'm just implying, sir.
Thank you, Jim. And I have one more question to councillor Hill, if I may, if that's okay with him? I've been made aware that in December of twenty two, I'm not sure if you remember that far back, there was a amendment made by you at a council meeting on PE seventy three, a dot point three, that was for a one point eight A savings provision to the Sessnock Local Environmental Plan. I was just curious because of the timing of all of this, and I'm not making any allegations whatsoever. I was just curious as to why at the time did you believe that it was necessary for such a provision to be made? And where did that come from?
Yeah, councillor Hill?
Thank you to you, Mayor Watten. I think you may appreciate councillor King, I have to take the question on notice. It's an issue from probably close to three years ago now. I'd have to go back and review it, but I'm happy to get back to you with an answer. If I could also ask if you were able to possibly forward that question to me in writing, just so I've got the context of the question and I can get back to you once I've got an understanding of, a recollection, I should say, of what it was that happened close to three years ago.
Yep. No worries. I understand that, and I do apologize. I only just thought of that all that sort of occurred to me probably at five o'clock today. And it's just something that I wanted to ask you because when I was looking at some of, because I know some of the opposition to this DA was because of the zoning requirements for it. So because the zoning requirements have changed a while ago, this provision particularly was made in anticipation of that, to my knowledge. And at the And at the time that was made, I'm not aware that there was actually any, um, development applications at the time that would have fallen into that category or would have benefited from that specifically. So there was zero. So I was just curious as to what, um, your perceived need for that was. Um, so saying that, because that provision was made, that now means that we have to assess this development application based on the zoning laws, um, that is within the savings provisions provided to this, um, development application. And it was a really tough decision for me, to be honest, but for me to be able to defend a decision for not supporting this in court, um, I fail to see any evidence that I can provide for a decision like that. So for that reason, I will have to vote in favour for this DA tonight. Thank you, that's all from me.
Councillor Dixon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I find myself in a state of considerable conflict regarding this development decision we are facing this evening. I understand the need for progress, but at what cost? Should we continue to endorse these developments at the expense of our natural bushland and wildlife habitat in the name of progress? Is there nowhere people can live in harmony with the land away from mainstream society? Should we choose to oppose this development tonight? It is likely that the developer will escalate the matter to the Land Environment Court for resolution. This course of action would incur, incur cost to the rate payer, leading me to ponder our responsibility as councillors. It appears to the, it appears that the community lacks a genuine voice in the decision-making process as a vote against this development could be overridden. Am I incorrect in my belief that my role is to represent the people of the Cessnock local government area? As in this chamber, we are frequently reminded that our responsibilities are not influenced by personal opinions or the views of a minority of residents. Instead, our focus should be on determining whether a development application complies, complies with established guidelines and regulations devoid of emotional considerations. The question tonight is whether this DA fulfills the necessary criteria and the answer is yes, it should be approved. The reality is that the development application does fulfill the necessary criteria despite differing opinions. The council recommendation is to approve this DA in accordance with section four point one six, four point one seven of the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act nineteen seventy-nine, contingent upon certain conditions. Furthermore, the proposal development aligns with the objective outlines in the Cessnock Local, uh, Environmental Plan two thousand and eleven, providing the recommendation conditions are adhered to. I have lived in a remote area and I can assure you that I did not move there to have a brewery built next door. I did not move there to be part of a community with social gatherings. I moved there for the solitude to live as one with nature and to live my life without outside interference, interference. So what am I to do? I know what I want to do, but I, and I think we know, we all know how this is going to end. Thank you.
Councillor Dixon, councillor Joad?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I emailed council last night due to a memo from two thousand and twenty-four where the document says in summary, the subject land is heavily vegetated and contains koala habitat and the extent of clearing requires, requires to establish the development is considered substantial. Response from council was that this is in, this was in the early stages of the assessment and council was waiting on additional information. Following the assessment of the additional information, it was determined that the site contained potential koala habitat and not core. Can I ask what the difference is of potential and core? Just because even the developer has stated there are koalas on site and with them being endangered, this needs to be really considered.
So just, did you, is that a question for?
Um, whoever can answer it. What's the difference between potential and core?
Uh, general manager?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. I, specifically, I'm not an ecologist, I won't go into the detail, but the, um, Biodiversity Act sets out, um, in, in essence, in, in simple terms, there are core habitat trees or koala habitat trees, and if they're identified on a property, then you need to make that determination. It then comes down to suitably qualified people making observations over a period of time as to whether or not there are mating or, um, female and nursing koalas in that, um, location. And in this case, that's not been identified through the, the history and the reports, done through ecological surveys, scat treatments, those kind of things. So that's, that's where it sets it. So if there were nursing mothers and they'd been sighted, then you would be into the koala habitat and a different regime would then apply.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so it is got heavily vegetated, um, for the koalas that are endangered, but because there's no nursing mothers, that makes it potential? If I got that right? Yep. Okay, so why those trading hours, Monday to Thursday, eight AM to eight PM, Friday and Sunday, seven AM to ten PM, Sunday, eight AM till eight PM and public holidays, seven AM till ten PM? Bigger hours than I think a lot of the businesses in Cessnock?
Uh, general manager, question for you?
Councillor Joad, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, those, in, in general terms, the licensed venues are normally open and as standard till midnight, um, and they will get to two AM with support from liquor and gaming or police accord. Some of the venues have longer trading hours. It would be in this case, I would call those reduced trading hours for an establishment of that kind, bearing in mind that the hours that they, they then operate within those trading hours will determine, will be determined by the success or otherwise of the business at the point that it does get to, to opening. So the, those hours I would describe in licensed venue terms as, um, reasonably restrictive compared to what we see normally.
Can I quickly ask you another question about that? Um, so what times will the alcohol, alcohol be able to be served? Will they be the same trading times?
At this stage, they'd need to apply through the, the liquor licence arrangements and that will be determined through the licensing arrangements. They need to be able to demonstrate they have, if they were going for early trade, which, uh, uh, on that case, in, in terms of food and drink premises, they'd need to be serving food with any drink that's served. That's the notion of the licence and the support that was provided. Um, but that's a process that they still need to go through, so I can't answer that definitively.
No worries, thank you very much. Okay, so lastly, I'm going to leave it with the same notion the police had. This type of venue proposed, proposed comes with inherent risks associated with alcohol-related crime within an isolated area. And in the event of an adverse alcohol behaviour by customers, it would be extended periods of time before emergency services would be able to attend, to assist in removing customers from the venue by police or provide medical services associated with customers or staff injury. There is no public transport or accommodation options and given the sites are isolated, is an isolated location, this will increase the risk of people driving under influence of alcohol and result in public safety issues. I'm not seeing any additional information about the courtesy bus, with it taking patrons home to Cessnock or Central Coast, as the developer said it will only stay in Buckety. Therefore, I'm not convinced this is the right location. Thank you.
Councillor Harrington?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Watten. Look, um, I take my role as a councillor very, very seriously and, um, and I do believe that my duty as a councillor is to represent those residents, um, within my ward, um, and, and, uh, the LGA as a whole. Um, and I was very passionate, uh, last council meeting, um, trying to get across the feelings that residents had conveyed to me through phone calls, emails, and when I was door knocking out of Buckety over the weekend. Um, but, but tonight I'm not going to, um, sorry, I'll just fix this. Um, tonight I'm not going to, um, debate or discuss anything, but I do would like, would like to make a statement, um, because I use the, the month between council meetings to send lots of questions to council. Um, I received lots more, uh, phone calls from, uh, supporters as well as opponents to the development. Um, and in, during that month, uh, between meetings, um, some information came to light to me that I would like to share. Um, so in, sorry, in light of the information that I recently received, I kind of, I wish to retract, um, some comments made by myself regarding alleged illegal clearing. I have since learned that the, that there is no current investigation being conducted by the EPA on Mr. McDonald's property and it was not my intention at all to make any allegations. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harrington, uh, councillor, yep. Uh, right of reply? Okay, uh, just want to have a very brief, brief, uh, word about this. So this, this has obviously been a highly contentious and a highly emotional matter and a lot of things have come into consideration. There was the matter of the police, uh, signing off on this effectively. There's the matter of the koala habitat, exactly what, what does that actually mean? And when it was reviewed in twenty twenty-four after the initial memo that councillor Joad mentioned earlier. And effectively what councillor King spoke to, we, we have to consider the LGA as a whole and I, I, we deferred the matter, we thought about it, we thought hard, we asked a lot of questions. But, you know, it's, it's been a matter that everything that's come back, there's nothing feasible for me to actually vote against this development application. So I just wanted to communicate that and, you know, make that clear from my standpoint. So that being said, uh, councillor Harrington, I'll put you still there, you.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, that was my mistake. Uh, we're now put the, uh, matter forward for a vote. Uh, those in favour? Councillor Grine, Hill, King, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmaalsky, Pascoe, Saval and Watten. Those against? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Joad, motions carried. Okay, now moving on to report number PE four. If we could just, just at the gallery, if we could just have respect, there's always going to be disagreements here, but yeah, thank you. PE four slash twenty twenty-five, so exhibition of the draft Cessnock Vineyards District Place Strategy for someone moving that way. Councillor Pascoe, seconded councillor Lee, uh, speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I just wanted to speak a little bit about, uh, this item. It's one of those sorts of reports that comes to council, which, uh, I guess at times to, to people watching at home or reading the, um, the agenda, it might seem like it's a bit of a very complicated sort of top level planning, uh, document. So just to give a bit of a overview of sort of what this, this, um, place strategy and DCP, um, are aiming to achieve, just so to give people an idea about it. Um, the, the place strategy that council have developed is to try to give a overview of what, um, what we would like to see, um, be the future of this area of our LGA, being the vineyards, um, area. And so this place strategy sort of sets out the outlook for any future development that we might like to see and what we'd like to see sort of preserved in certain areas. I think it's important that this plan, this play strategy sets out to strike a balance between sort of four key, um, themes within the vineyards. That's the, uh, important agricultural land being in the viticulture of vineyards, uh, in this section of the LGA. The important environmental land, that's sort of the areas that aren't developed that, um, provide some of the fantastic picturesque views and things around the vineyards that bring so many of our tourists, uh, to our LGA. Uh, visually sensitive land, so that's, um, ensuring that any development that goes ahead to support, uh, tourism and viticulture in the, uh, in this area, um, does not impact the scenic views that are brought about by viticulture and such, you know, so you, being able to stay at an accommodation and having an outlook of beautiful vineyards, um, is important that that doesn't get overridden by seeing multiple accommodations spread out across an area that, uh, whose key theme is, uh, the rural, uh, aspect of this land. And also striking the balance between being able to enable sort of further expansion and growth of tourism and accommodation, but within those bounds that maintain the benefit of this area within the play strategy. And the DCP itself sort of aims to set out more specific guidelines at the development application level, so that when, when developers or interested parties are looking to move ahead with, um, applications in this area, that you have a very direct sort of guide to what council expects to be, uh, within an application. You know, the number of, sort of the density of accommodation, the number of rooms or buildings and things like in a, in an application. So that's the sort of thing that we're looking to lay out to ensure that the rural character, um, and environmental aspect of this area within the play strategy is maintained in the future.
Thank you councillor Hill. Councillor Lee? Oh, sorry, just before I go, sorry councillor Lee, I just noticed that you had your button on first before councillor Pas, okay, no problem. I'm, sorry councillor Lee.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, important initiative as councillor Hills touched on for shaping the future of, um, our renowned Hunter Valley wine region. Um, I believe it's imperative that we approach it with careful consideration, so I'm glad to support this going out onto public exhibition. Um, I do note that in the, uh, shared pathways in there are considered to be critical and I can't imagine one that's more important than the Shiraz to Shore project, so it'll be interesting to see, uh, what feedback we do receive around that and how that's progressing. Um, noting it was a pretty exciting announcement at the other end of that project, uh, made in the last forty-eight hours. So I'm very glad to see that the people of Cessnock will get to have their say on this one.
Thank you councillor Lee, councillor Joad?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with what's already been said in the chamber, but I more so wanted to add a dot point if I could, like I've done previously. Um, whereas if public submissions receive twenty percent objections, the matter will return to the council meeting for further consideration. Sorry, Robin, if I said that a bit too fast.
Uh, councillor, just with regards to, so recommendation two, so I believe.
If, if it's already going to be doing that, then I'm, yeah.
Yep.
I know we just had a few on, so I just put it with all my notes, so I wouldn't miss one.
Yep.
So if it's already doing that, then I'm happy with that.
Okay, thanks councillor Joad. Councillor Harrington?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Watten. Um, I too support the, uh, comments made here by my fellow councillors regarding, um, this place strategy and DCP for our, our vineyard area. Um, I think it's, yeah, very important that we protect the viticulture and have a balance between agriculture and tourism is most important. I just would like to make a comment and not a dot point, but just in consideration with the community, um, engagement team. Um, I've always been a little bit concerned that when things go out into public exhibition, we get very little, as, as sometimes, not the Waste Management Strategy, but other, um, policies, we get very little feedback from the community. And I would like to see perhaps with this one, and I mentioned it, um, in a, in a meeting earlier this week with some other, um, council staff, that we look to have a public meeting out at the Colton Hall so that, um, in the vineyard, so that the people, the stakeholders who this is going to really affect, um, can come along, more, more like a little workshop type thing where questions can be asked and the plan can be explained, um, to the community. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you councillor Harrington. Uh, councillor Dixon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd just like to ask, is there any, concerning the cycleway network, um, Shiraz to Shore and all the, um, planned, uh, pathways around the Hunter Valley? Do we have any kind of statistics as to actually the number of bike riders that use our area?
Question for director?
Sorry.
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for the question councillor Dixon. I'll have to get back to you with that information. We did, we have done a recent, um, count of, um, traffic and transport related, um, data for the traffic and transport strategy.
Yep.
Which was twenty twenty-three and I'll get back to you as to whether we took, um, uh, counts for cyclists, uh, as part of that as well.
Yeah, it's just that, um, I just find it, um, strange that councils seems to be spending so much money on cycleways, um, yet our roads are in such a bad state. And I just was wondering, like, who would actually ride a bike around the vineyards as a tourist going from vineyard to vineyard? Because one of the beauties of our vineyards is everything's quite spaced out. And I think if I was going to the vineyards for a tour, the last thing I want to be doing is riding a bike, especially if I've been drinking. Yeah, so I was just wondering, where's all this heading? Like, why are we so obsessed with cycleways?
That'd be a rhetorical question.
More just a comment, why are we so obsessed with cycleways?
Okay, we'll take that as a comment. Thank you councillor Dixon. Councillor Saval?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Maybe to sort of update councillor Dixon on it, the Shiraz to Shore project, there was a business case done by the Hunter joint organisation. I'm sure staff will be able to have that and maybe share with you, but it outlines the project, the tourism benefits. And one of the key things we know from cycle tourism is cycle tourism is actually growing internationally, that more people are going on these kind of active tourism experiences across the globe. And a key benefit for our area is, that would be for our area, is that those cycle tourists, they stay longer in areas and they spend more money per day when they're here. So when you're trying to attract tourists to come to visit areas, you look at sort of your high-value tourists, and they are one that's considered a high-value tourist because of that. They stay longer, they spend more money per night. So we want those people here, we want them staying longer and spending money in our local government area. And I think the Shiraz to Shore project as a whole would be an international attraction. This is 100 kilometres of cycleway network that runs from our amazing wine country right through to the fantastic beaches of Newcastle and the shores of Lake Macquarie, interconnecting there. There's potential links to, that already started the links to go from Newcastle through to Williamtown and further up to Nelson Bay, where we'll continue on. So there's a really good business case and a plan put behind it. I'd encourage all councillors to look at it if they haven't seen it, because this is, would be, I think, a game-changing tourism project. The numbers, conservative numbers that it was suggesting would create 100 jobs within, from memory, this is a, trying to rack my brain, but from 100 jobs in the first year. And then within the 10 years of implementation, they expected it to have created 200 local jobs across the area in tourism related to that cycle network itself. So it's something that I think we should definitely be advocating for. It's not saying you don't continue to advocate for roads. We are, we're spending more on roads than any council before us has ever spent. So it's something we'll continue to need to do. But yeah, cycle tourism, what I'm saying is don't discount it, look at the details and it would be a huge benefit for our area. And just in wrapping up, I just want to thank the staff for their perseverance and patience around this strategy. Councillors may not realise, but basically this strategy was done and approved like two years or more ago. We actually weren't going out and had voted to put it on exhibition at the time. But before we could do that, the Department of Planning held us up. They said they were going to deal with it. It then got delayed through there, changed their mind, they weren't going to deal with it, and it come back to us to be able to manage and update. So the staff have been wanting to take this action for a while, and I know it's been a hard slog to get there and go through that churn. And I just want to say thank you for the work that they've done to pull this together. And I look forward to hearing the feedback from the community and from, especially from the vineyards community around this before it comes back for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Saval. Councillor Groine?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move a procedural motion, to put the motion, please.
Motion put, seconded. Councillor Lee will now vote on the procedural motion. All in favour? Councillor Dixon, Groine, Tracy, oh sorry. Councillor Harrington, Hill, King, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe, Saval and Watten. Those against? Councillor Jurd? Yep. So going back to that point before, because he did press before anyone spoke, did you? No, no, write a reply? No? Okay, so we'll just put the motion. Okay. All right, now moving on. Yep. So moving on to vote, so all in favour? It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to report PE5/2025, the Exhibition of the Draft Infrastructure Contributions Plan. Someone moving councillor Hill, seconded councillor Pascoe. Speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Once again, I'd like to speak a little bit on this report. It's one of those, I think, perhaps sort of massively important in disguise type of reports to council. This is a majorly relevant document to our council, covering the growth and contributions from developers towards infrastructure across the next 10 years. So this issue, and I'd like to initially say thank you to staff for their commitment in providing additional workshop and briefings on this issue to councillors. We were able to get an opportunity to really pick the brains of staff on some of these things, which I found greatly helpful earlier in the week. Getting to the sort of content of the, to the report and to the importance of the community being across it and having their say when it's on exhibition. This, these infrastructure contribution plans outline the dictated need of infrastructure by council, what we think we need to be able to deliver to serve our community through infrastructure demand across the next 10 years, and outlines how we aim to collect contributions from developments in our LGA to contribute towards this infrastructure. Gets down into the real nitty-gritty in regards to the mathematics around how we, what kind of legislation allows us to levy particular amounts of money from development. A lot of the time it's to do with the percent impact on sort of the requirement for infrastructure, depending on how many people lived in an area prior to the development and how many people will live there, and how many more people will generate need for infrastructure and services. And I think sort of all councils would appreciate that across the board, the current legislation makes it very difficult for councils to collect, I guess, the appropriate amount of money, so from developments. So it's always ends up that council, it feels needs to be picking up the slack in the way in which we fund these contributions and this infrastructure. But nevertheless, this report aims to provide an overview of the amount of infrastructure that we plan or hope to be able to deliver through these contribution plans over the next 10 years. It also outlines our intent to apply for ministerial direction to increase the contributions that we are collecting from existing catchments of areas in our LGA, such as Huntley, and those new proposed catchments areas like the Loxford on the hydro site near Currie, to ensure that we're able to get the most contribution from these developments as possible, to try to serve the growing need of infrastructure that these new developments will create. I think that it's also important to note that this report outlines council's current strategy in realigning what we had previously dictated that we would be able to deliver through the existing contributions plan, and refining that down to something that is more manageable over the 10-year period. Our councillors worked very hard over the last term and over the beginning of this term to be able to increase the capacity of infrastructure delivery that we've had. And while we've been extremely successful, we still need to be able to understand that there is a limit to how much infrastructure we can deliver in a term. We are, we are not a massive LGA in terms of the amount of residents and ratepayers, and we need to be able to make sure that the capacity of infrastructure that we aim to deliver aligns with what we are capable of delivering. So I encourage those in the community that are very eager to understand sort of the way in which infrastructure is planned out and funded through our LGA, to have a look at this, get involved in the consultation that's going to be undertaken while this is out for submission. And I hope to see additional workshops and briefings provided for councillors in this following submission period, to allow us to really get our heads around and have input into how these contribution plans will be laid out in the next 10 years.
Thank you councillor Hill. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suppose first I'd like to make a couple of comments, because attached to this has been a schedule of capital works that was approximately $531 million. It's been cut down to $371 million, because, one, the capacity to be able to do that, and, two, council also has to contribute to a part of those same capital works to make it happen. It's not completely covered by contributions. So I understand that this is just going on public exhibition and we can still make submissions, but I am just a little bit, I suppose, disappointed that we're having a briefing on our financial sustainability in early April, and there's a significant impact that this capital work has on our overall financial budget and overall operations, from my understanding. So I would have really preferred to talk finances before we look at capital works and delivery programmes and all the rest of it, so we have a better understanding of what the overall picture looks like. Because I know also, you know, there was a list of 147 items cut off this CapEx schedule. So, you know, I'm sure all councillors would have had, would have liked to have some input and about which ones needed to be cut. And then I'll finish off with just a couple of questions for my own information, maybe to the general manager. Firstly is, why did we take on so much work to start with and then decided to cut afterwards? Because we can't, my question is, why did we take on so much capital work, like $531 million worth?
General manager? I'll give it to strategic manager.
Thank you for the question and through you, Mr. Mayor. Historically, council has had a number of contribution plans applying to numerous areas across the Cessnock City area. When you collate those different contribution plans, developed independently of each other, the total cost of those works in those plans, from an historical point of view, represented the, represents the value of around 140, something 400 million, which is now escalated due to costs increases since the COVID pandemic.
Yeah, good, thank you. And then I'll just make sure there's no other questions. Oh, is there any legal liability? I know another councillor asked that question in a briefing session before, but any of these cuts that we're making to the works programmes, are there any legal liabilities? You know, I'm sure you already checked, but just for the public record.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's no legal liability, but there's an obligation and an expectation that the monies will be used and spent within a reasonable timeframe, hence the 10-year plan delivery programme to deliver the works within this plan. And then moving forward, we'll keep on adding to it.
Thank you, and I'll just finish with this comment. The reason why I asked those questions is simply because from a business management perspective, I would have thought that someone would look at what your capability is, as in operational wise, if you have the resources, the manning power, the machines to do the jobs, and then also your financial capability, if you can actually meet those commitments that you're entering into. And clearly there's some concern, because we're now cutting it back to, because a lot of that work we won't be able to get done. And I'm not saying anything negative towards staff, just to be clear, I understand why you're doing what you're doing. I suppose I just wanted to have my opinion heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor King. If I could just ask a couple of questions of manager of strategic plan. More so for the sake of transparency, we went through some of these with the workshop, which I really appreciate staff making the time for. This is a big topic, and again, to iterate councillor Hill's point, this is a major, major, you know, plan to consider. So for the sake of transparency and in the interest of what the community might be asking, is what mechanisms are currently in place to ensure transparency and proper allocation of funds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of transparency, the plans are endorsed by the full council. So they're not a plan that is developed by staff independently of the council. They're council-endorsed plans, so they are on my council's web page and available for everyone to see. In terms of expenditure, there's legislation and guidelines of how the money should be spent and on, you know, when and priorities. We have set up an internal steering committee of managers who have a requirement to consider infrastructure requirements, whether it's the asset planners or the planners that manage the plans themselves, where we work through and prioritise expenditure of the money on an annual basis. When we're developing our operational plans and our budgets, we work through with our asset planners to make sure that wherever we can, we can allocate money from the contribution plans towards capital works that council has identified within the delivery programme or the operational plan for that year. And we are also working very closely with finance and with the works and infrastructure team in terms of trying to finalise a 10-year expenditure programme, so we have a forward plan in terms of identifying the infrastructure that we need, the priority, when the money's needed, and allocating that over a 10-year work programme. So there's a transparency, and that will be available once that's developed as well.
Okay, thank you for that. One last one. So with regards to our contribution rates, how do they actually compare to other councils? And can you maybe speak to how Cessnock may be a little bit different? Every LGA is different, but how does it compare?
It's very difficult to compare. It's like comparing apples and oranges. It depends on what infrastructure is needed within the catchment of the plan, whether it's a local catchment or district catchment. And the infrastructure needs within different catchments, even within Cessnock, are totally different. So for example, Billbird North, which is our most expensive catchment, which is above the $30,000 cap, is our most expensive, and we're not collecting enough money to even deliver the infrastructure that's in the plan, even though we've pared back the infrastructure in that plan. As in the recommendation, we're looking to seek approval to have contribution rates of between 20 and 30, but we need ministerial approval. When you compare Cessnock rates to our adjoining councillors, councils, sorry, again, it's extremely difficult, because we need to understand that, you need to understand that their infrastructure requirements will differ greatly compared to Cessnock. It will depend on what infrastructure they already have, what their population growth is, et cetera, et cetera. But it's fair to say Newcastle, Newcastle, for example, I understand is, most of their area is about $20,000 per lot, except for a couple of their urban release areas, which are around $30,000. Lake Macquarie's in the same range, Maitland's a bit cheaper. And some of our cheaper areas, where between, you know, $5,000 to $10,000, are probably the, some of the cheaper rates across the Hunter. Most councils are somewhere between 10 and 20, because there's a cap at 20 for non-urban release areas, and then there's other areas between 20 and 30,000. I hope that answers the question.
It does, there. Thank you very much. Is there any further questions or discussion? All right, put it forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Okay, now moving on to report PE6/2025, the Exhibition of the Draft Cessnock Development Control Plan Chapters, tourist accommodation on rural and conservation lands and signage and outdoor advertising. Can I have someone moving that way? Councillor King, seconded councillor Jurd, speaking councillor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on dot point two with the draft signage and outdoor advertising development. There's been a lot of signs in recent times, like the train for Cessnock campaign, that I know people put yard signs on the front of their fences. I was unable reading all of this information to determine how this or if this will affect those kind of signs as well. Does that now mean that if anyone intends to put a sign like that on their front fence, on their personal private fence, that they need to fill in a DA application? Will that be the case at all?
Question for, yeah, Strategic Manager.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Since you, you raised the question, we've done some investigation and for the councillor's benefit, signage is controlled by both state policy and our own controls in the draft DCP and the existing chapter in the DCP. The state policy overrides council requirements. If it falls within the state government policy for signage and it complies with the, the guidelines and standards within that policy, councillor has no say in it. The initial, the initial investigation suggests the signs that the councillor was referring to put simply our exempt development. They don't need an approval. So there's no need to have controls and the council wouldn't, wouldn't have any say if they comply. And I'll qualify that, if they comply with the standards within the state policy, which at this point I don't know. So there's area requirements and there's dimensional requirements. But subject to that, they would be exempt and there wouldn't be any requirements for DAs or anything like that.
Okay, just to clarify, no one's going to wake up after this is eventually approved with a fine because they didn't fill in a DA to put a sign on their front fence. Is that correct?
So, so, sorry, I didn't hear that question.
If that, do you just want to repeat your questions about fines?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, just to be, because you gave a very elaborate answer and I appreciate that. But just in layman's term, no one, when this after exhibition, this plan is approved, no one is going to wake up and get a fine in the mail because they have a sign on their fence.
We're not actively going out there to.
Okay, thank you. That's all questions that I've got.
Okay, thank you councillor King. Councillor Harrington.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Look, I do also have some questions and comments regarding the signage and outdoor advertising part of this, these recommendations. I noticed firstly that some of the signage that are not, that will not be permitted is currently in our LGA. For example, I know there are businesses with signs above their awnings, which the new policy will be not permitted. I know some that have signs that are extended above the height of their building and they will not be permitted. And then there's also five metres from a pedestrian crossing. I know plenty who have A-frame signs out that are within five, five metres of pedestrian crossing, which is easy enough to fix. They can move a portable sign. I'm just concerned for those businesses that do have these permanent signs that after this goes to public exhibition and is passed, they will have to bear the cost of removing their signage and putting extra signage, signage up. Or is there an option where certain instances can be exempt because they were pre-existing?
I have to give you that, that question, manager.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think you'll find there's already an existing chapter on signage. It applies to those signs which aren't covered by the state policy. And they are, there is a chapter that gives guidance on the signs and citing them. And I think you'll find that some of the issues you've just raised may already be an issue under the current chapter, not the draft chapter. But I'm happy to take that question away and we can compare the two, the existing and the draft chapter. And I can come back with your precise answer.
Yeah, please, because I just, yeah, I do know for a fact my, in my own case of my previous business, we, our signs would not comply with this current draft, but those signs, that signage has been existing for 50 years. So just.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the state policy identifies exempt and complying arrangements for the other signs. The anticipation is that a development consent would have been issued and the DCP, be it the, the existing chapter of ones before that would have applied at the time the application was consented to. Provided they're continuing to comply with that consent, the existing use rights or continuing use rights, depending where we arrive, would apply and those signs would be able to, to remain. It's only an issue where they either didn't have a consent that brought to our attention or they're not operating within the consent that was issued.
Can I continue? Sorry, I have a little bit more to add. So my other issue or question is regarding, again, community engagement. This is going out on public exhibition and I would be hoping that if the previous place strategy in the vineyard do have a pop in at the Colven Hall, these policies will also be addressed at that meeting. But I was also just wondering, there are a lot of businesses that this will affect and business people are very, very busy. And if you're going to put it on public exhibition, where they have to go to the library or come to council chambers or even go online, I know they have the option to go online. But it's in our current climate, sometimes the information doesn't get out to the public that these things are on exhibition. So I'm just wondering, does council have, or the Chamber of Commerce have a database of email addresses for businesses where this, this policy can be emailed directly to businesses so they know that they can hop onto to get a Cessnock and make a submission about that policy?
I might have to give that to the general manager.
Thank you, councillor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do work with the chambers. I don't, some of, well, we've got two in other business communities. Some have good lists and others less so. We'll work with those, but I'll, I'll take your point about the insurance of other opportunities to make sure and we'll work with our comms team to make sure that we are more broad than just a, an advertisement and a notice on the website.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Harrington. Councillor Savile?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Councillor King asked a question earlier that said with, with this policy and then like things, is there any chance that someone will wake up tomorrow with a fine for having a sign in their, their front yard? And the answer was no, we're not out, out doing that. And my question is then that if I go home tonight and put a, a sign up for, for Dan Repacoli for the federal election in my front yard, am I going to have a fine issued by council for, for putting that up?
I'm assuming that's under a different, different bag altogether, but would you like to take that over to the general manager?
Councillor Savile, through you, Mr. Mayor. They're different signs. So the, and the state environmental planning instrument dealing with advertising deals with public notices and it deals with election signs. The practice that we have with an election sign quite specifically is that if you do do that and it's not within the election period identified by the issue of a writ, we will write to you. We'll have already written to the election officer and to the recognized parties and advise them that the sign was issued, was put up illegally. We do that twice and then we ring you and say, can you move the sign? And if you continue to not comply, you will get a fine. It's a reasonably straightforward process. I would argue that if you don't follow the rules, then you will get a fine. And if you do, there's no issue. So when, in response to that election signing, which I know was an issue raised earlier, when the election writ is issued in the six weeks, as long as you comply with the state environmental planning policy dealing with election signs, there's no issue. This DCP doesn't deal with those matters.
Yeah, but so, but the answer is I, I could still end up with a, a fine of, of, and for, for those in the public that don't know and then those in, in the community, if you're issued a fine for an election sign that's up in your yard, that's there illegally, it's $3,000 per individual and $6,000 if it's an organization. I think that's outrageous. I wanted to discuss it tonight because I think it prevents people from dealing with it.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Savile, we're kind of straying from what we're actually voting on. I appreciate the sentiment and yeah.
So I'll move an amendment that if we can go back to my previous urgency motion, that the, the three dot points from that become points four, five and six.
Yeah, just with that matter, Councillor Savile, we, we did deal with that matter, the motion of urgency before.
Yeah, but that was as a standalone motion of urgency. You said it wasn't urgent, even though we know there's an election coming, which is clearly wrong. But we, I can move it as a thing. I, I didn't get to move it. It wasn't seconded. There was no debate. So.
I, I'd have to effectively, because we are still continuing down this line of it's, it's straying off the actual matter that we're, we're here to vote on. So I'll reel this actually out of order. Yeah, we've dealt.
This, this report in front of us is about outdoor signage.
Yeah, I, I would suggest.
Amendment is about outdoor signage.
Yeah, Councillor Savile, I, I would suggest with that particular matter, we might need to do another notice of motion and hear that matter separately and go to the proper channels.
Later tonight.
Oh, well.
And that was your ruling, Mr. Mayor, that you didn't want to deal with this prior to the election. You said you wanted it.
Well, there's no reason. So we'll just might, yeah, thank you, Councillor Savile. Councillor Judd. Councillor Hill, point of order.
Just for clarity for myself, just I'm not understanding, I'm, I'm not 100% sure on the procedure and other councillors may not be able to, is it within the right of the chair to reject a councillor's attempt to move an amended resolution for a motion under a chair, a ruling of the chair? Or should Councillor Savile be able to move the, the amendment and then have it be debated as normal? And then if councillors are in agreement or disagreement as to whether the amendment is suitable, we can vote on that?
So effectively, I, I can speak to that. So just with regards to the motion of urgency, what Councillor Savile did raise initially, we did deal with that matter and the, the fact that we've moved on to a completely separate matter that's not related to that, then it's, it's effectively out of order. So that dubs the rule.
Yeah, so I guess, sorry, just for additional clarity on my side, just trying to understand it. I guess is your ruling? That the, the, and I guess the intended amendment is not relevant to the report? Would that be the ruling, I guess? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I want to add a dot point that I was going to do before. If public submissions receive 20% objections, the matter will be returned to the council meeting for further consideration. I do this because there's a lot of small businesses that would be impacted.
Point of order, Councillor Savile.
I'd, I'd ask you to rule on the legality of the motion, given that we have already adopted a community participation plan. This doesn't deal with the community participation plan. It's related to another item separately and therefore is not relevant to the one in front of you, just as you ruled on my previous motion. So it shouldn't be considered as an amendment.
Isn't it going out on expedition? I'm just asking for it to come back if we get.
Just general manager, sure.
Okay, firstly, I just want to say, I thought with election material, it was only the person on the sign that got the fine. Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure how that would actually be relevant in this case because election material, it's only the person running. So unless it's not Dan running, you would be safe.
I'll just, yeah, we'll have to get back on track with this one. Sure, thank you, councillor Judd.
So how will this impact small businesses that rely on showcasing their work from a residential property? So for instance, businesses that use a homeowner's property to display completed projects such as roof painting, you know, bathroom renovations or fencing could be significantly affected. So those sorts of things are still okay, aren't they? Because we were talking about it at the start with Quinton, oh, sorry, councillor King's question.
General Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillor. The business identification signs and signs for home businesses are dealt with similarly through the state environmental planning instruments. So they can be either as exempt or complying. If you don't satisfy either of those criteria that are established, then it would be a development application which would still be supportable through the DCP. They're not ruled out. Majority of those signs, they are through the state planning instrument exemptions.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure because when we were talking about so many things, you know, where we have real estate signs, we have those sorts of signs, we have people's opinion. You know, we don't want to step on the freedom of speech now, do we? Thank you.
Okay, no further debate? Oh, councillor King.
I'll just in my writer reply, I think, I'll just clarify to councillor Savile that the person placing a sign on your fence is not actually the one receiving the fine. The candidate that the sign belongs to for his campaign receives the fine. And I know this because I was one of those candidates that received the fine in a previous election campaign. And I'll leave that there. Thank you.
Okay, we'll put this forward for a vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Moving on to CC nine slash 2025. This is with regards to the amendment to the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Advisory Committee Charter. Can I have someone moving councillor Hill, second to councillor Groan, speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I'd like to speak briefly on this report to give some information on sort of what's the intent of the resolution is. And I guess speaking to how I feel about the outcome from the request for representatives to be on this committee. And this is a committee that I'm one of the council delegates to and had some involvement in the last term of council. And this report and this resolution is to allow us to expand the proposed membership of this committee to account for the fact that we've had 14 nominations from the community to take part in this committee. I think that that is a fantastic representation of how keen and, and willing members of our community are to be involved in this council endeavor. And I think that during the last term of council, we saw a few instances where this committee operated in quorate, where there were not, not enough members of the, the not enough representatives from the community able to attend particular meetings, which meant that councillors were able to discuss with those that did turn up, but it was not, was not formally, formal sitting of the, of the committee. So those minutes that came to council were able to be adopted by council and the information was able to be accepted by council. But the, the, the meeting itself sort of was maybe not operating in the best way it could. And I think that being able to expand the capacity of this committee to 14, one, allows everyone who's expressed an interest in being involved to, to have an opportunity to come and be involved in this committee. And two, sort of gives us a bit of a safeguard wherein with more members of the committee, we're more likely to have a relevant number of people there at the committee to operate it with a quorum. And I think that having more members there present can only result hopefully in a wider range of views being expressed and better, more ideas being debated. And hopefully that means that this committee will be even more successful this term of council.
Thank you councillor Hill, councillor Judd.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just got a quick question, like, does it really matter if, if the committee has quorum or not? Because we've sort of been told it doesn't really matter, yet now we're sort of saying it does matter to meet.
So the quorum, is it a question? So I'll just catch that.
Sorry, does it really matter if the committee meets quorum or not in quorum? I don't know. I can never say that word.
Oh, I'll give it to the director, community.
Thank you, Mayor Watten. As all committees of council, I think it's very important that we have a quorum. Certainly this has been a bit of a historic problem with this committee. It is advisory in nature, so it is a little bit different to some of our other committees. So certainly the expansion of the, the representation on it is to be supported, in my opinion. In relation to a quorum, I think it is great to have it if we certainly can. I wouldn't say that it doesn't matter if we don't have one, but there are other options where we can bring forward some general information reports, which we have done for this committee. But yeah, it's important.
Just another quick question, because I've had a member of the public actually reach out to me about joining this committee. When, when is it actually available to the public to join, just for future reference?
Director.
Thank you. I think from memory, the EOI process for members of the committee was between November and February of last year and this year. There is some information in the charter in relation to future applications to join. But I can't recall exactly when they are, but certainly if a member.
but I can't recall exactly when they are, but certainly if a member of the community has some interest, they could certainly put forward their interest in that, and we'd be able to respond to them in appropriate format to advise them that, you know, A, there's no spots left, or B, this is how you will go about it.
Yep, no worries. And just, I might have missed it in the paperwork, but do we get a copy of who was in the, who the extra people would be?
Director.
I'm just curious.
That's not in the current paperwork, councillor Joad, so the amended charter, which was adopted by council in November of last year, set out the criteria and the process for community members to be selected, but that doesn't involve the elected council.
Okay, so will we get a copy eventually? Or if we go to that meeting, then we'd be able to find out?
Once we, if council supports this proposal and it makes the amendment, we will certainly, we will assess or reassess the 14 applicants. My understanding is they've all been assessed and all been pretty much ticked off every criteria in the charter, and we would certainly advise those individuals and advise them that have been successful, get their confirmation that they're happy to accept that nomination, and then we will advise the councillors themselves.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Councillor Pascoe.
Thank you, Mayor Watten, I only had a really quick question. In the committee charter, I couldn't see anything that told us how often this committee meets, or how many times a year. Does anyone know?
The Director would, Director.
The Director should know, I can't recall off the top of my head. Normally, from memory, it met three or four times a year, but basically it was, we left it to the actual committee to work out how often they needed to meet, and it really depended on the items that were coming up and the things that needed to be assessed, and how much obviously staff needed to get things run across the advisory committee, but I would imagine it would be, frequency of meetings would be in there somewhere, but I can't recall what it currently is.
No, I couldn't find it, and I was just curious, because I'm on a couple of committees and I just.
But yeah, like, three to four times a year, and then pretty much as needed, would be the answer.
Okay. Councillor Joad just spoke earlier, so he gets a question?
If I can, I can actually answer councillor Pascoe's question. When I was on the committee last term, it was about every three months that we met.
Okay, thank you, councillor Joad. Councillor Hill, we had a write a reply and speak. I just want to make a quick comment then, is there any further debate before we move on? So this to me speaks volumes of this current elected council, the fact that we've got a record number, I don't know if it's ever, but it's definitely a higher number than last term, and I think this really speaks to the inclusive nature of our council. I understand there's a lot of divisive talk and chatter on Facebook, but I think that facts rule over fiction any day of the week, so I'm just very pleased to see this, and it's the intangibles that speak clearest sometimes, and this is one of those, so very happy to hear that and see this. So now put the matter forward for a vote, all in favour? So moving on to report CC10/2025, that's the land acquisition of the South Sessnock Bund Wall. Have someone moving that way, councillor Lee, seconded councillor Harrington, speaking councillor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. As the councillor representative on the flood mitigation committee, I thought it's only fitting that I move this and speak to it and just point out that it is a matter of public safety and flood mitigation and part of our long-term infrastructure planning, we need to approach it with a clear understanding of its benefits. The Bund Wall is an essential piece of flood protection infrastructure and designed to mitigate the impact of heavy rainfall and storm events on South Sessnock's residents and businesses, as well as our public infrastructure. South Sessnock has a history of flood risks, with previous storms causing damage to properties and infrastructure. The Bund Wall is a proven mitigation strategy, but without necessarily land acquisition, further upgrades and maintenance would be delayed, leaving the community vulnerable. So it's for those reasons that I support the land acquisition, urge fellow councillors to consider the long-term safety and sustainability of this investment.
Thank you, councillor Lee, any further discussion? Put it forward for a vote, all in favour? Moving on to CC11/2025, this is to do with the Australian Local Government Association in 2025, the National General Assembly attendance and motions. If I could have someone moving councillor King, seconded councillor Grine. Yep, so firstly, we'll need to name the delegates, so speak, so I'll put councillor Hill on.
I'm happy to be the initial amendment mover, if that helps get the ball rolling. I'm happy to move that we just amend that first dot point to include some details about the voting delegates and attendees. Just very briefly, sorry, I've got to put a question to the Director of Corporate and Community, could you advise on which councillors have submitted an expression of interest to attend?
Director.
Thank you, we have nominations from the Mayor Watten and councillors King Saval and Palma, King Hill and Palmaalski, so you need to select a voting delegate out of those four, and whether you wish to send all four councillors as attendees.
Okay, thank you very much. No, no, sorry, I misspoke. Very well then, I'll move that the council determine councillor Hill as voting delegate, and councillors King, Watten and Palmaalski as attendees for the Australian Local Government Association, General Assembly.
Okay, so we've got that.
Sorry, can I speak?
Yeah, Director.
So councillor King and Grine moved the motion, so are they happy with your proposals, councillor Hill? Because if they're not, you'll need to move an amendment, and councillor King will need to move who wishes to be the voting delegate and the attendees.
Just letting him finish. Sorry, I was going to say, I was going to make a point of order because I was actually the councillor that moved the motion, and then you missed me speaking, and I would have liked to follow tradition and elect the mayor as the voting delegate, and I'd also just like to make a comment, if I'm allowed, is that?
No, I'm sorry.
Just so the other councillors know, I just put my name up because as recent as last week, at a briefing session, I was notified by staff that there hasn't been any applications to this, so that's the reason I put my hand up, so there is some pretty important topics on that, so I wanted to make sure that we do have representation there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just confirm just what we discussed just earlier, so you're moving an amendment? Yep, so you're moving your amendment to, yep, Director.
So just for the minute taker, so we have a motion from councillor King, seconded by councillor Grine, that it's Mayor Watten is the voting delegate and three other councillors attendees, and now we have an amendment moved by councillor Hill and seconded by councillor Saval, that the voting delegate is councillor Hill and the other three councillors as attendees.
Well, I make note that when we were nominating delegates for the New South Wales Local Government Association, we included a provision for there to be an alternate voting delegate, which indeed was actually utilised at the time because councillor Saval was unable to attend. So I guess in my, if I can amend my, sorry, just change the wording of my amendment, to be that the council determined councillor King, councillor Hill as the voting delegate, and the mayor as alternate voting delegate, and then remaining King and Palmaalski as attendees, just as a sort of procedural, sort of make sure that if some person's not available to attend, which has happened in the past, that there is an alternate voting delegate available.
So you're dealing with the amendment now?
Okay, so you're seconding that? Okay, so we'll now debate the amendment, so councillor Joad.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This might be one of those hard questions, but have we ever actually had where the mayor and deputy mayor go to a conference like this, and the deputy mayor votes over the top of the mess, gets the voting position?
Director.
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Who the voting delegate is up to council, there is no rule that says it has to be one councillor over another. Historically, for this conference in particular, usually the mayor has been the sole attendee, but there has been a couple where there has been other councillors, but I can't recall what the voting delegates are for all the other conferences. But at the end of the day, there is no set rule that says it has to be one councillor over another.
I just actually think it's a bit rude, to be honest. I'll put it out there, I do think it's rude. If the mayor's going, I feel like the mayor should be the spokesperson, because he is the spokesperson for us, with council, and if he can't attend, therefore then another delegate is put in place. So I feel like I'd be happy to support you be the voting delegate, councillor Hill, if the Mayor Watten wasn't able to attend, but because he is going to be attending, I feel like the original motion should be the one that stands.
So to confirm, you don't want to move another amendment?
I don't think I can, I would just like to go back to the original motion.
Okay, well, we'll vote on that after. Thank you, councillor Joad, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mayor Watten. What's normally the amount of councillors that do go to these seminars? I know it's local government, there was four, and plus myself as an alternative, what is their limit? What is the limit? Second question is, we're not providing an alternative for a person to go without being a voting delegate here.
I'll give that to the Director, but my understanding is there's no limit, but Director?
Thank you, no, there's no limit, it's up to council to elect how many they wish to send. What was the second part of the question, sorry?
An alternative to if someone can't go for some unforeseen reason.
Certainly there is opportunity to have substitute attendees. Normally you would have council approving that attendance, so in this case, if one of our three or four attendees couldn't go, that would basically just be a lost opportunity and lost cost for the ticket to go along to the thing. In relation to the voting delegate, obviously the current motion has an alternate delegate in there, so you would hope that both wouldn't be unavoidably detained and not been able to attend.
No further questions there, councillor Madden. Councillor Hill, you spoke out, so a good question? Councillor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Look, I just, wow, I can't support councillor Hill's amendment, I too strongly believe that in the instance that our mayor is attending this conference, he should be our voting delegate, no questions asked. And of course, I know Mitchell, councillor Hill, would do a wonderful job and he would be a great alternate member, I would, cannot support that amendment, and I prefer the original motion, thank you.
Councillor King.
I would also like to just reiterate to some of the comments from the other councillors and remind this council that the mayor was elected democratically by the people to be our leader, and it should only be fitting that if the mayor's going to be there in attendance, that he should be the voting delegate. I have complete faith in councillor Hill's abilities as a deputy mayor, but I think it's just fitting that the actual leader of this council goes to Canberra and be the leader of this council, thank you.
Councillor Saval.
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Now, I've got a question for the Director of Corporate and Community. At the last Local Government New South Wales Conference, did we have four delegates attend the last conference?
Director.
Thank you, Mayor Watten. My understanding there was four voting delegates to that conference, yes.
Did the mayor attend that?
Well, I can answer that, you don't have to go through a director if you like. No, I didn't attend because I was unwell, so it's probably prudent that I don't go and share germs.
Yeah, so we had a conference, that my understanding is we were left one delegate short on that conference. Councillor Hill was there, and just at a recent motion, we asked the mayor to talk about the advocacy work that he does on behalf of council to increase transparency, and it was rejected by the same councillors that are saying the mayor's the one that should be out there doing this and doing this advocacy work. So councillor Hill has, I think, been exemplary as deputy mayor, he's gone to all the meetings that he's asked to, he's done a fantastic job. To be honest, I think he's done more than any deputy mayor has ever done in my time on council. There's, it's an extraordinary amount of work and dedication he's put in and been required to, and I think if he's there, I would have more confidence in him being the voting delegate.
Okay, thank you councillor Saval. So just a question for councillors of all, would you attend just with, you know, recent pandemics and sicknesses and things like that, would you think it's wise just to attend if you're sick?
Councillor, I'm not sure of your circumstances at the time, I just recall there was one vote short from council, I know there's been, I've had reports from other communities events that have been on around the town that we haven't had representation at, and it's been reported back to me on multiple times, we haven't gone to these things, so I feel in the instance of needing someone there to actually participate and be involved in those meetings, actually have the meetings with ministers there, not like we had the planning minister offered to meet with.
Okay, look, it appears that we're straying again, so we'll stay back on topic, appreciate the sentiments there. Councillor Madden, you spoke earlier, so do you have a question? No, so councillor, yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, so councillor King, yeah, question?
Question to councillor Saval, are you saying that you don't agree with the democratic process that we follow in this place?
Councillor Saval.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Director already outlined that there's actually no requirement for any one person in particular to be the voting delegate at this or any other conference that we have, so it's been up to each individual council to elect who they choose, and this is exactly part of the democratic process of electing who we as the 13 councillors in this room would like to send as our voting delegate. That is the democratic process.
Councillor Grine, so you have a, I just, I want to put the amendment forward for a vote, seconded councillor Lee. Okay, I'll put it forward for a vote, so this is to do with the amendment that was just being debated on, so for, for the amendment, this is for the amendment for.
This is the procedural motion.
Oh, my apologies, it's to do with the procedural motion to put this, yeah.
We're voting against the amendment?
Yes. Okay, okay, unanimous?
Councillor Hill against.
12-1?
So that's the motion, so Mitch still gets the right of the vote.
Yep, councillor Hill.
That was my main reason for voting against, so that's my mistake, but no worries. Thank you, Mayor Watten. I take into consideration the comments from other councillors in regards to their thoughts on like the mayor being the default attendee. Initially, when this amendment was first moved, you'll note that councillor King's motion does not include an alternate delegate, and I thought as my position as a councillor, I feel I should have the right, if I have the wish to attend as a voting delegate, everyone else is more than welcome to vote against that request, but it's, I feel that I have the position to be able to at least request that I be the voting delegate. I do note previous attendee attendances to conferences, your absences may. Um your absences may be unavoidable, you may be sick or unable to attend. So I don't hold that particularly against uh Mayor Wotton for the New South Wales um Local Government Association. However, I feel like I have the opportunity here as a councillor to put myself forward as a voting delegate. If it's unsuccessful, then uh that's the decision of the council to make.
Okay, we'll now put the amendments uh for a vote. Those in favour? Councillor Grine, Hill, Lee, Madden, Palmaskey and Saval. Those against? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Jerd, King, Mason, Palmaskey and Wotton. The amendment's lost, we'll go to the original motion. Oh, my apologies, Palmaskey was, yeah, for the amendment, Pascoe against? Okay. Just so I've got that right, so we just. We're all correct? Okay, now back to the original motion. Sorry? Okay, okay, I'll just give it some time, so we'll just give, it's hard to keep up sometimes, things move and shake. Okay, so just just to confirm, we're going back to the original motion? That council determines the mayor as the voting delegate and councillors King, Palmaskey and Hill as attendees? Voting alternate, yep. Okay, so we want to add just that that amendment there? Yeah, councillor Hill as the. Yep, alternate, yep. Okay, so we're now back on, I'm just making sure that we've caught up with everything there. Yep. So just for the sake of time, just before I councillor King, if I may, just just quickly, we have spoken this quite exhaustively. Um can we all agree that we can put them out to a vote now? Uh councillor King?
Can we just please get um one of the directors to exactly explain what is going on with what we are voting on now? Because it's changed a couple of times and there's been a little bit of chaos in the chamber. So it was really hard to follow and hear what was actually being said, please?
Uh so I'll I'll just feel that, so we we did have the amendment that was lost. And so now we've gone back to the original motion, which is a as you see it on the screen right there. So we've just added in there that councillor Hill is the alternate voting delegate. But everything goes back to that original initial motion, so the.
Yeah, I guess so the mayor is the delegate and councillor Hill is the alternate delegate, yes, I'm happy with that.
Correct, you're happy with that? Okay, no no debate, we'll put this forward for a vote, all in favour? Councillor Dixon, Grine, Harrington, Hill. Oh, it's unanimous, sorry, I didn't see your hand, the councillor Madden. Okay. Everyone okay to move on to the next item? So CC twelve twenty twenty five, the authorisation to borrow. Has someone moving that way? Councillor Hill, seconded councillor King. No debate? Councillor King?
Um I have some questions if to see if I was here to know, and I know he always enjoys my questions. Um it is just in in regards to um just for my own clarification. In the large budget, oh sorry, the large budget report in December, there was um bridge replacement program and shared pathways program, there was money cut from that budget. And now part of this motion, we will be borrowing money for something that looks similar to me. And um to me, that also means that we'll be borrowing it over twenty years. Um can you just tell me if I'm um misinterpreting what's going on there, please?
Okay, a question over there for CFO?
Uh thank you councillor King, um do appreciate the question. Um the uh to answer the first part, yes, there were funds cut from the bridge uh bridge replacement program and the shared pathways, but not this funding is still required to complete those ones that are still in there. Um so that's necessary and also for part of um programs that roll out into next year. So just getting a little bit ahead of the curve in that sense. Um the second one uh was to do with the loan term, yes, or will we have a twenty years? That's uh essentially because these are long-term um projects and assets that last for a substantial amount of time. So for instance, um cycleways um have an effective life somewhere around a hundred years. And then uh bridges could be anywhere between fifteen and eighty years. And then like we've also touched on before, the the new waste soul is uh twenty years or hopefully exceeding that, depending on new changes that happen in technology, so the loan's nicely mapped to that.
Okay, uh councillor King?
So can I just ask again? Um why do we cut from the same pool in the last budget if we're then now going to borrow for it? I'm still a bit unclear about that.
Um I, if you're after more detail, I'll probably have to take the question on notice.
Yeah, okay.
Because I'm not exactly certain the amounts that were cut at this moment in time, I haven't reviewed that.
I've got a mirror, I can tell you what they are.
No, but I'm not exactly certain what the programs were and that relates to in regards to this funding and what's actually been cut from it. I'm happy to take that on notice and revise the details to councillors, but I can't give it chapter and verse right here, right now.
Okay, thank you, um CFO, I appreciate your input as always. And um then I'll just end with a comment again, reiterate my frustration with a lot of things that happens before uh the briefing about our financial sustainability. Thank you.
Okay, uh no further discussion? Put the matter forward for a vote, those in favour? Councillor Dixon, Grine, Harrington, Hill, King, Lee, Madden, Mason, Pascoe, Saval and Wotton. Those against? Councillor Jerd? Okay, the motion's carried. Moving on to CC thirteen slash twenty twenty five, the community engagement strategy post exhibition. Kind of someone moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Lee, uh speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Um I just wanted to speak a little uh on this report and the um plan that is going to be exhibited for public uh comment. The community um engagement strategy has undergone a huge amount of work from our council staff. I can I can recall a number of public events and instances over the past twelve to eighteen months where our engagement teams have been out talking to the community and face-to-face and taking submissions online to get their feedback on about how they would like to be um communicated with and kept up to date and be involved in the council process. I think um for something that we've expressed um an interest in being a really key part of council's um focus moving forward, that's been community consultation and making sure uh individuals are able to have their say and be involved in the process. I think showing that there's been such a huge amount of work put into this um is great to see that staff are taking that on board and 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 sort of acknowledging it's a key area that we needed to make some improvements on. Um I'd like to see uh even more additional submissions and and community consultation done during this period. People um having a look at the plan and identifying whether or not they agree with what's been put together. Um and uh I think that this is a step in the right direction to ensuring that we are able to keep uh everyone involved in the conversation moving ahead with council.
Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um I just wanted to sort of support what councillor Hill was saying there. Um I and I know a number of councillors have strongly advocated for better community engagement. And I'm really pleased to see that council is um doing something to take the bull by the horn, so to speak. And I'd also just like to um commend the staff that was involved in um putting this new strategy together. And I really look forward to seeing it in action, thank you very much.
Councillor Saval?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Um I always like to take the opportunity to speak highly of the the amazing staff we have here at council um that that do a fantastic job um day in and day out. Um and I know through this work, uh it's been an ongoing process that we we really wanted to improve community engagement. Um over probably the last five or or six years or more from from uh council, we took a a direction to do that. Um but I do want to um just give a um a special shout out to um who has been council's um community engagement officer, Tommy Griffiths. Um Tommy did amazing work uh during his time at council. Uh very sad that he's uh gone on to greener pastures uh to further his career. Um and I know he'll be sadly missed at at council, he's done an amazing job uh in developing these strategies and really engaging with the community on on a number of projects and and things that have been going on around the local government area. So um I just wanted to to thank him for the for the work that he's put in um over a number of years at uh at council and say thank you um and wish him all the best in his future career endeavours. Thank you.
Councillor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. Yeah, well, that's I didn't realise that, that's sad to hear because um yeah, Tommy um and the team, they're infectious with the way they try to engage the community um in what is happening um in our LGA with our council. Um look, I'm just a little bit disappointed though, this is strangely, that it's a um it was a a po- a community engagement policy that we only had ninety-seven visits on the Together Sessnock um Facebook, oh sorry, website, and only one submission submitted. And that made me have a look at or or question, why are we getting such low responses? And then I look later on this evening, we're talking about the Waste um Resource Recovery Strategy, and we took a different um option and we did a surveying of the community and we got one thousand four hundred responses. So I just think that maybe we, and I'm not criticizing the team because the team are are wonderful, but I think maybe there are people in our community who are don't have the confidence or don't feel they have the skills or the time or even the interest to make a submission to a policy. But if you hand them a questionnaire with a couple of questions, you may get a lot more uh responses as the waste management one had shown. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you councillor Harrington. Just before we uh wrap up the debate, I just also want to give special mention to uh Tommy as he leaves. He he was infectious, that's the right word for him. And I really, I'm very confident that our comms team will keep carrying that, uh keep carrying the torch into the community. Uh yeah, and take your sentiment there too, you know, to with those low submissions and yeah, get get that uh consistent operation. I'm looking forward to councillors being a part of engagement as as plans go forward for on exhibition and so on. So uh is there any further discussion on this? If the discussion will put forward for a vote, all in favour? It's unanimous? Moving on to WI two twenty twenty five, it's the draft Waste and Resource Recovery Stra- Strategy twenty six to thirty one. Uh someone moving that way, councillor Lee? You want to move an alternate motion? Yep, councillor Lee?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um I think the, I'm going to take it shortly, have you, it's on the screen there. I'm basically just changing it from a minimum period of twenty-eight days to a minimum period of forty-two days. Um just keeping in mind that we have the um school holidays coming up shortly.
Sorry councillor Lee, sorry, uh just a minute, a second, uh just with regards to that, uh councillor Hill? Sorry, go on councillor Lee.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um so as I was saying, we've got school holidays um coming up, we have the uh Easter long weekend in that time and also Anzac Day as well. Uh and also at some point, uh while this is on exhibition, a federal election will be called and we'll take, I guess, uh some members of the community have only got limited space in in their lives for political engagement. Um and a a federal election might slightly outweigh uh the interest in our Waste and Resource Recovery Strategy. Uh so it just allows a bit of extra time for the community and still allows it to come back in time for our May um ordinary meeting in May.
Uh councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I'd just like to um ask the director, this is the third different draft um amount of days we've had tonight, twenty-eight, forty, forty-two. What's what is the standard, like with?
Uh director?
Um thank you. There are some statutory standards in relation to advertising, um certainly around things like our code and meeting practice and the like, that is a forty-two day period. There is other standards in the Planning Act that says a minimum of twenty-eight days. Um as a standard, we probably use twenty-eight days. Um but it is really depending on what the individual strategy document, plan, whatever it is that um is going out. Um and certainly I know over the Christmas period in November, December, council regularly extends that period beyond the forty-two days. But saying a minimum of twenty-eight is a minimum of twenty-eight, we can advertise it longer than that if we wished to.
Yeah, like I I'm not not supporting it, but we're just, we seem to be, there's a lot of different amount of days we voted on tonight. And we just pro- I suggest we streamline it. That's all.
Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions around FOGO to the director, I suppose he can decide who answers it. Um just my first question, if I may, do we know what the exact dollar amount is or approximate dollar amount to each household with FOGO now being included?
Uh director?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um thanks for the question, councillor King, I'll have to take that on notice to get those details.
So just point of order, there's a bit of disruption going on here, what what's going on?
Uh point of order?
Thank you. Um I can't hear the director, that's all, say again, please?
I'll take that question on notice.
Yep, thank you. Um then another question, um when are we required by the state government to have FOGO implemented?
Director?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um again, thanks for the question, councillor King. Um twenty thirty is the the date mandated for introduction of FOGO.
Again, there's there's another financial impact that we're going to put on our residents again because we're introducing FOGO um because of a decision from uh council to bring this forward. Um I would also like to ask, is there any reason why we can't push this back a couple of years to save that financial burden on um the residents until the, you know, until just before we're actually mandated to have this come into play?
Director?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um councillor King, there was um there was a paper put up in twenty twenty-three that highlighted um uh a a delay to im- implementing FOGO to twenty twenty-five, uh July or thirtieth of June twenty twenty-five this year. Um there were two other councils, that is, um Singapore and Maitland are also in this um contract uh for implementing FOGO. Um and both of those councils um have voted um in line with Sessnock City Council's um introduction date. Um so we're we're committed to the twenty twenty-five date um with respect to meeting our contractual obligations for uh for the green waste and FOGO.
So so we made a agreement with two neighbouring councils on a date to when to implement this. May I ask, um when did we make that decision and why?
Uh director?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh councillor King, that decision was made prior to me joining council. However, um that um that was a part of uh a consortium between the two, the three councils to implement FOGO and share resources and costs uh for the contract uh for the FOGO um implementation.
Okay, thank you. So does that mean, sorry, last question, I promise, does that mean the cost to our residents is not just on our residents, is being spread over three LGAs, is that correct?
The 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 costs themselves, um per per um per um uh char or per resident um is established as part of the 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 contract, yes, um and they're shared across all three, but they're a per resident rate.
Yeah, okay, it's great to hear that it's um made the deal cheap, I thank you.
Uh councillor Jerd?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um in the objectives outlined on page uh ninety-six, I have a few questions regarding. regarding the strategies and actions planned to achieve these goals. So the first question is the achieving zero waste. What specific steps will be taken to reach this target? Will this include initiatives to reduce, reuse and recycle more effectively? How do we reach zero waste?
Director.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the question councillor Judd. To give you a comprehensive response to that, I'd like to take that on notice and give you and all councillors the information on how council in line with the state government's initiatives is aligned with reducing that to zero. There's a complex number of initiatives that sit behind that. But I'll provide that in a detailed response if you don't mind.
No, no, no problem. I only thought of, I only wrote these down at four o'clock this afternoon. So hence why I didn't send them in an email. So you might get a few that you might want to take on notice. So two, managing risk of problematic harmful and unnecessary waste. Does this imply the potential for re induction of the dump shop to facilitate the reuse of items that would otherwise contribute to unnecessary waste?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, another great question. If you don't mind, I'll take that on notice and provide that back as part of my response.
No worries. Okay, I've got two more. They'll probably be on notice soon. Achieving zero carbon emissions, what measures are being considered to reach this goal? Does this imply a total scissillation of garbage collection services considering the carbon emissions produced by collection trucks?
Director.
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again councillor Judd. If you don't mind, I'll also take that on notice more than happy to provide a comprehensive response.
I'll end up emailing them to you.
Sure, that'd be great.
But optimising our performance, what strategies will be implemented to enhance overall performance in these areas? Are these objectives merits or indicators that will be used to evaluate processes toward objectives? So that one, I know you'll have to take that on notice, but I just wanted to say it. So residents are aware of some of the things that, the objectives that are in this report. I encourage residents to attend the upcoming community sessions, which I just want to outline. There's one outside the IGA at Brinkston on the twenty-seventh of March, between ten AM and twelve PM. Outside Coles at Curry on the second of April, between three and five PM. And inside Sessnock Village Plaza near Woolworths on the, yes, I did say Sessnock, on the tenth of April, between ten thirty AM and twelve PM. I suggest highly, this is the best way, if you've got questions, to be able to speak to the staff. And like we said, it's a shame that Tommy won't be there because he was always good for being able to answer these questions. So according to page ninety-seven of the agenda, consultation is taking place regarding bulky waste services, household waste collection, following the addition of food to organic bins, Sessnock Waste Management. Oh, okay, I don't know why I've got that written there. That's not irrelevant. I have mentioned it before about chickens. Have we looked into chickens? I know it seems so out there, but there was a study done in another country, where they offered residents three, like chickens, and one in three applied and got chickens. And it reduced our waste, their waste massively that they were so surprised. So is that something that we're going to be looking at down the track?
Well, I know that, I've heard things of worm farms and all kinds of alternatives, but a matter of chickens, director, comments?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor Judd, that's a very interesting proposition. Again, if I can take that on notice. I do know as part of this that that was not part of the discussion and part of the consultation process, but we can provide you with some information on how that is able to be considered, particularly considering that we have some pretty stringent legislation through the EPA that we've got to adhere to, but.
It might actually create more problems than fix. As I could imagine, the complaints coming in from noise from chickens and the smell. But I will just quickly finish on a question now because I've done it so many times tonight and then been told that it is coming back to council. Will this one come back to council?
Director.
Adopted?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Judd, I'm almost certain that it will, given the consultation process that has been undertaken prior to going on display. I'd imagine that there is a lot of interest in the strategy being adopted. So we will be coming back to council with feedback on what we received from the public exhibition.
Awesome, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
No further questions councillor Judd. For a moment there, I thought we were going to go for an amendment for a chicken offering in our waste strategy. So councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I have the challenge of now following questions about chickens. I feel like I'm under pressure. I'd just like to speak a little bit to some of the statistics in this review. I note that the initial motion, this review was meant to be undertaken earlier last year and a motion of the previous council sort of to get this review underway and brought back to this council was successful and has resulted in a lot of this information being brought forward to us now. The, on page three hundred and eighty-two of the enclosure, there's some key information about the cost of waste in our LGA. And in some of my conversations already with the community since we received this report, some people have probably, perhaps similar to myself, been a little taken aback. The report details that over the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four financial year, the cost for council to provide our waste services was eleven million dollars for that year. And it also details part of that cost being mainly contributing from the New South Wales Government's waste levy of approximately four point five million dollars. In my reading of it, I understand that that four point five to be a part of the eleven. I may just put a quick question to the director if I could, either corporate and community or works. Does that four point five million cost that we have paid to the state government in the levy a part of that eleven million dollars or additional to the eleven million dollars?
Three hundred and eighty-two. Director.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the question councillor Hill, that is part of that ten million, eleven million dollars.
Very good. Thank you very much. Still quite a staggering amount of money when you look at the costs across our council. However, this waste is a key pillar of local government and our continued delivery of it, I think, is very important to our local government area. Other key statistics I think are worth noting is the record of the average weight of, average weekly, weekly waste bin content, sorry, by weight from twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four, which sort of dictates to us that members of our residents across the community throughout the whole LGA are seeing a greater need for the disposal of general waste. You see in twenty seventeen, on average, was about six kilograms of general waste in bins. And that's increased to eight point two kilograms in twenty twenty-four. So we can see that there has been a trend in our local government area for an increase in the demand for general waste collection, which has also been noted in our recent review, our recent sort of audits of our bins, which have shown that a huge number of local residents' bins are near capacity when they collect it each week. And I think that's an important thing to note as well in relation to this strategy's recommendation for weekly general waste collection to remain in place. So some residents and some other local government areas have implemented, some residents may know that some other local government areas, such as Lake Macquarie, have implemented a fortnightly general waste collection as a part of their introduction of FOGO. However, that is not the intention within this plan for our council to move ahead with. And a key part of that is the concern after our recent bin audit that with so many general waste bins near capacity, we would risk further contamination of our other collections if residents were unable to have a location to store their general waste and that pressure was put on them. So I think that's key that we maintain that weekly general waste, especially under these new information that's been provided. I do have an additional question for the director. In the report, it states that our current resource recovery rate for all waste collected is approximately thirty-nine percent. So that's thirty-nine percent of all the waste collected is taken elsewhere than our waste management facility, be it green or yellow bins. Are you able to give some advice, director, on what our current target for resource recovery is?
Director.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the question councillor Hill. We're able to, our target through, there are state and federal targets. But the target that we meant to achieve by twenty thirty is eighty percent.
Eighty? Okay. Seems like quite an impost from the state government. That's in line with many of the cost shifting measures they undertake. And briefly, I'll just close with some comments in regards to the, especially the consultation sessions councillor Judd noted. I think I'd like to extend my thanks to staff for their proactive work in having this information provided to councillors and the community when things are voted to be put on exhibition. In the past, it's not always been clear when the sessions will be held just within the exhibition period, but this gives the community and us as councillors a very clear indication of when we need to be available and when we need to be present at consultation sessions. And I think is a fantastic change in the way that that's been executed. So hats off to the staff for that.
Councillor Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the introduction of the FOGO, apparently there's going to be an option for people to only have their red bin collected fortnightly instead of weekly at a reduced rate. Is this going to start from when the FOGO starts or will be introduced later?
Director.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the question councillor Dixon. That's yet to be determined. We want to wait until the feedback from the public exhibition period comes back to ensure that we have the right messaging and the right information to be able to implement that appropriately and provide that option, should that be the community sentiment.
Yep, thank you.
No further questions there councillor Dixon?
No, thank you.
Just double checking, councillors of all.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I just want to answer councillor King's question from earlier and then ask a couple of questions myself before making some comments. Councillor King asked about the timeline of the contract around this. So my understanding is Sessnock Council, Singleton Council, Maitland Council all went into a fourteen-year contract around green waste, of which the first seven years were the current service we're providing and the subsequent seven years for FOGO. As the director mentioned earlier, that was changed in twenty twenty-three to have the FOGO implementation pushed back a year because the supplier wasn't ready. Now, that contract, because I'd asked questions about it a number of times, it was actually entered into not during the last term of council, not during the term of council before that. It was actually the one before that. So that's how long ago this goes. So it was, I asked questions in my first term of council around it and was found that it had already been implemented prior. So it was either early twenty sixteen or prior to that. It's been going for that long. Question for the director of works. So question is, my understanding is if we sort of push through and adopt this waste strategy, it will increase the domestic waste charge on rates. I understand there was a figure floated around earlier about sixty dollars a year. Is that correct?
For your director.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor Saval. Yes, there's an increased cost to retain the general waste services and retain it weekly of sixty dollars per annum.
And then a question for the general manager. In regards to procedures of how things are dealt with by council, is, does council staff act on failed resolutions of council? Or do they only act on past resolutions that have been supported by council?
So, director.
Thank you. Councillors Saval, officers implement the resolutions of council as quickly as possible, depending on what they, different resolutions are.
Thank you, director. Yeah, that was my understanding is we had some recent commentary from the mayor around saying that curbside collection was all implemented through a merril minute at the start of this term. For those that may recall, that merril minute was lost and defeated. So as we've just heard, council staff took no action from that and anything through this was, were things of discussions that have subsequently gone from that. But I just, I suppose, want to raise a bit of concern as we've got the mayor out there spruiking this strategy and saying it's great. We've got this curbside collection pickup happening in it and how great are we as the independent councillors for delivering this? This strategy actually doesn't say we're definitely going to implement curbside collection. Says we're going to think about doing that and.
I have to be a point of order, that's incorrect. I never, at any point, did I say we're implementing this at all. I said to get your, your feedback in. And just to reference my point, just because you brought it up while we're talking about this, it's just with relation to the councillor briefing. And I understand that you may not have attended probably any briefings this term. But regardless, there was note to the merril minute that was referenced back on the fourteenth, sorry, twelfth of February, where at its meeting on the twenty-third of October twenty twenty-four, council resolved merril minute seven, MM seven. And that, even though it was amended, the council notes, the council note the ongoing review into the Sessnock Waste Management Strategy and note our support for investigating all possible options for bulky waste to be included. So just need to, you know, clarify that and make sure the information is accurate.
While you're clarifying, can you say whether you voted in support of that or against that? Well, we've made the point of saying that.
Regardless, the motion was carried through. So if we're going to talk to the.
The motion was carried and so I'll go back to the.
So we upheld it.
If I'm allowed, but I'll go back to the debate on this. That was a motion that you actually voted against on that. So what we're considering is a potential sixty dollar increase to everyone's rates. Now, for those that may not realise, our domestic waste charge is the second highest across the Hunter region, Hunter Central Coast region. We already charge at the moment six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents, only to be outdone by Upper Hunter, who's six hundred and sixty. Most others are in the mid-five hundreds, some in the four hundreds. The cheapest is Midcoast Council, that's quite a, the large area council, similar size. Now, I know they have different costings around the waste levy, but they are down at four hundred and ten dollars ninety-two. So we're already the second highest. We're looking to put it up by another sixty dollars for this and we're not even committing to do curbside collection, which we know is going to increase it even more. So how much more?
Point of order, we're not sure of costings. We can't speak to any potential costings until the actual report comes back. So again, just whatever.
Well, my question to you would be, Mr. Mayor, how much money are you prepared to charge local residents to deal with your key policy of curbside collection along with all of these other things in the domestic waste strategy?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I will answer that question. Thank you for the question, Mr. Saval. So I am happy, sorry, councillors Saval. So I will wait for the report to come back, as we all will. And I have full faith that council staff will do a due and diligent job with all prudence. And I look forward to the submissions that we receive from the community and the feedback that I've received personally from the community is that they are in supportive, are in support of this. So let's see which way the community steers the ship.
As long as they're aware of the costs that you'll be imposing on them to do it.
Well, thank you councillors Saval. Thank you. Councillor Judd.
I just got a quick question. I got so held up on my chicken statement before that I missed a couple down the bottom. So as state government put a levy on waste to landfill, how much do we get back in environmental projects?
Director.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again councillor Judd for that question. If you don't mind, again, I'll take that on notice and provide a comprehensive response with the questions that you've asked.
Can I ask a quick question? If I send those questions tonight, roughly how long until I'll get a response? Do you know?
As soon as we can possibly work our fingers to get them done.
Awesome. And just a quick question. I know it's, I mean, I got a little bit taken back by the long talk about political stuff again. I mean, seems like that's been a lot. We're only voting what for tonight with this? That the Draft Waste Resource Recovery Strategy, what? What are we voting? We're voting that council places the draft waste?
Effectively, I could answer that.
We're putting it on expedition, aren't we? We're not saying we're going to adopt it.
It's on exhibition for.
We're putting it out on expedition, correct me if I'm wrong, for the community to have their say like we normally do. Is that right?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. I didn't think we were implementing it tonight, but thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you, councillor Jerd. Councillor Harrington.
I just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very, very quick comment. I kind of take a bit of offence to councillor Saval's comments there about the mayor deciding how much we're going to charge residents extra for their waste collection. I was under the understanding that the decisions are made by council as a whole, not the mayor. And so any recommendations that come before about charges to a community are not the mayor's decision solely that we all. Sorry? Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, any further questions?
No.
Councillor, councillor Hill, I saw you had your. Okay. Okay. Let's put it forward to a vote. So to be clear, we're voting on the policy on exhibition. So those in favour? All in favour, it's unanimous? Now, moving on to WI3/2025. It's the tender, the betterment of Thomas Street North Rothbury Civil Works. So someone moving that way. Councillor Lee and seconded councillor Harrington. Any discussion? Councillor King.
I just got a question, more admin, I suppose. Usually when we get tenders before us, it's classed as confidential. And on this motion, the company name that we, the recommendation is for including even the price to it is on the public agenda. Can I just ask, how does that work?
Director.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. The recommendation, as in the report, is the normal process in relation to tenders. There has been a couple more recently where they had a lot more commercial and confidence information. Hence why the whole report went into closed session. However, the general direction, I suppose, from the officer local government is where reports can be, they should be in open session. And this, how this one is reported, is probably how we do 98% of our tender reports to council.
Thank you.
No further discussion. Put it forward to a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous. Now, business or which written notices have been given? So report number BN6/2025. It's investigation for opportunities to reduce vandalism in public spaces. Someone moving that way. Councillor King, seconded. Councillor Jerd speaking. Councillor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one is about asking council to investigate and report back on potential opportunities to reduce vandalism in places like specifically sporting fields, skate parks and playgrounds. Then also that the report should include assessment of current policy. So it's, I've been made aware in the director's commentary that we don't actually have a report, sorry, a policy for vandalism. But then also it's asking for consultation with relevant stakeholders and exploration for best practices from other LGAs. So just a couple of things. I'm sure I don't have to mention all of the vandalism that has been occurring recently. Just in the last two weeks, I think there was two different ones that happened. I know everyone wants this. I can confidently say I think the sporting clubs wants this as well. Asking council, you know, let's be pioneers, let's make a policy to deal with this. We've also been, I've engaged with the police and they've told me that there's a dedicated crime prevention officer that's whose job it is to work with organisations to assist them in coming up with ways to mitigate crime. So to me, this will lighten the burden on police as we voted on last month. Councillor Saval, from memory, said that, you know, instead of just writing letters, we need to do things to actually assist the police. And I do believe this is something that we can do to assist the police. I'm sure everyone wants this. We've got one of the sporting clubs that was affected by its vice president here. I'm sure his people would be very happy to have council do something or at least engage with them to do something about the vandalism that's going on. So unless there's any questions, that'll be all from me until my round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Wotton. I appreciate the intent that councillor King has brought forward this motion for. I think I would agree with his sentiment that most councillors would like to see a reduction in vandalism in areas around our public parks and things across the LGA. I recall, and some other councillors may not have been aware, but during the previous term of council, we investigated the suitability of something along these lines in regards to security and security cameras, CCTV in some parks after a similar type of issue arose in Bridges Hill. And for the benefit of the council, I can recall the amendment that was, to the motion that was brought forward in March 2023, noted that council direct the general manager to identify funding opportunities for crime prevention solutions or monitoring, in brackets, installation of CCTV, where a cost benefit analysis confirms it will provide an operational cost saving. Consult with New South Wales Police, in brackets, Cessnock Local Area Command, in relation to the effectiveness of CCTV and the identification of priority locations across the LGA for potential implementation following grant funding and consider the development of a CCTV policy to protect community assets. So move from that previous motion, my question perhaps to the, one of the directors, the appropriate director would be, do we have any update on the outcome of any of those dot points from council? Have we liaised with Cessnock, New South Wales Police, the Cessnock Command about the effectiveness of this and what was the outcome of looking into a CCTV policy?
Director.
Thank you. Most of that question I'll have to take on notice, councillor Hill.
Yep.
But certainly in relation to what actions were taken or have been taken, I would refer you to the Resolutions Tracking Report. That should provide you some answers. I can't tell you off the top of my head where they're up to.
Not a problem. I appreciate that. My thinking as well on it, I note that councillor King has made the comment that, you know, this is something that we think all councillors may think should be done and something that perhaps is in line with what the police would recommend we undertake. I do note that in the previous month's meeting, council supported a notice of motion also from councillor King for further consultation with police. I do understand that a preliminary meeting between some councillors and local government representatives, sorry, state government representatives and police was undertaken. However, all councillors here in the room have not yet had the opportunity to partake in consultation with the police any further than that. And I would perhaps just hold some reservation, not in thinking this notice of motion shouldn't move ahead, but perhaps that it could be more encompassing after the fact of talking to the police. There may be a number of additional opportunities and procedures and policies we could request a report back on once we've had that further consultation with police to understand how our council can best support them in addressing issues across our LGA, not just vandalism, but domestic violence, other youth crime, other things like that, where we could get a more comprehensive report back on potential opportunities and strategies once further consultation has been undertaken. I can appreciate that some councillors may have had that initial discussion with police, but I've not had that opportunity and other councillors in the room have not had that opportunity. And I think I'd be more comfortable if something like this notice of motion was perhaps deferred until after council, all councillors have had the opportunity to engage with police.
Okay, so to order to the board has to be two for, two against. So we've got no further, no further debate. Do want to note though, we do have a council report coming up on that, the first meeting with police. So I believe councillor King's going to speak to that. So there's no further debate. Oh, councillor Hill.
Best determination, I guess, because I did note there in my response that I think that the best procedure would be to defer this until afterwards. However, perhaps it's best if I would note a foreshadowed motion that this, you know, I don't know. It's, maybe I'll just move a procedural motion to defer this notice of motion until after all councillors have the opportunity to meet with the police.
Okay, well, just to clarify your options here. So you put the procedural motion forward or we can, you can move an amendment? So you sure you want to procedural, go for the procedural motion? Okay, so. Yep, so we need to second on that. So this is to do with councillor Hills. Yep, so we've got councillor Grine. Beg your pardon? Seconded? Okay. Yep. Councillor Hill, would you like to speak to? Point of order, councillor Jerd.
I'm just unsure, like when we, last council meeting, when we tried to defer the buckety, it had to be two for, two against. What's the difference now for?
Let's move the procedural motion, but I'll, yeah, go, director, if you want to add some more commentary to that.
Just in response to councillor Jerd's question, the motion for around the buckety one was that the motion be, sorry? It was a motion to defer.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Two for, two against, wasn't it? Yep. So yes, certainly that was the advice at the last one. And thank you for the general manager for refreshing my memory. I am trying to forget that council meeting. Councillor Hill, in relation to, as the mayor has said, if you wish to move an amendment, you certainly have that opportunity. But procedural motion at this point can't be moved.
Okay, so effectively, we're going to vote on. Yep, point of order, councillor Saval.
So my understanding, a procedural motion around closing debate, like that no further speakers be heard, may allow for two for, two against. But a procedural motion to defer an item can be done at any time with no speakers and has been done multiple time in the past before anyone's ever spoken. So you should be able to move a procedural motion at any point that the motion be deferred.
Okay, just had to confirm about that. So with relation to moving forward in the best possible way, most timely way, to put forward an amendment, if you'd be open to it, to reconvene after the actual meeting with the police goes ahead and when all councillors actually have the chance to speak with police. You'd be happy with that? So, yep, so would you like to work with the wording with that? Okay.
The motion can be that council reconvene to further consider options available to help address impacts of crime within the Cessnock LGA after further consultation is undertaken between Cessnock councillors and New South Wales Police.
Okay, so we need a second to run that one. Anyone seconding that amendment? Councillor Pamowski? Seconding Pamowski. Councillor Madden?
Oh, it does consider options. So we're talking options there of policies, current policies and what, yep, okay.
Okay, so just take a brief moment just to look at the wording on that. Councillor Hill, you're happy? Yep, point, yeah, point three. Okay, we'll put that forward for a vote. Those in favour of the amendments? Yep, you sure can? Yep. Yep, okay. Yeah. So councillor Hill, just to confirm, do you want to speak to the amendments? Okay, okay. Councillor Jerd?
I just want to really quickly just say, I get where you're coming from, councillor Hill, but I kind of see, we've seen all the cry out from our community about vandalism and I feel like this is just going to slow down the process a little bit. So I can see where you're coming from, we've wanted to get all the information, but I feel like Quinton's actual norm is actually to get the information. So, yeah.
Councillor King.
Well, I'll throw my five cents in on the amendment as well. Just because I understand councillor Hill's point of view on this, but I also do feel that those, that extra dot point could have been as part of council's investigation because obviously part of that investigation, council staff would engage with stakeholders and the police and everyone they need to, to come up with, you know, the, if it's going to be a policy or whatever plan we come up with there. So that would have been a part of it already. But I will say I'm happy to support the amendment. Once again, if this means that we can actually take a little bit of action and fix the problems people are asking us to fix. Thank you.
Okay, so just confirm you're happy with the amendment as it is for the sake of moving things forward. Okay. Councillor Hill? Sorry? Got councillor Madden. So I'll go councillor Madden first. Councillor Madden.
Thanks, Mayor Wotton. I'm concerned about the length that the consultation will take place with the police, that's all. I am concerned with the amendment, with the length, if we can put a timeframe and go back to the original amendment, original motion. Yep, if you, Mitch, if we're, with your amendment, if we can put a timeframe on that of no more than one, one month.
Just concerning that, just to speak on that. So when we had the meeting with the police initially with state member Clayton Bar, Danra Macaulay, federal member, councillor King came along with the notice of motion. We looked to meet with police, with mayor, state member and federal member present for the initial meeting. So I believe we're looking to meet back within a month, but then moving forward. So it's hard to put a timeframe on it with availabilities and everything like that. So let's say it's nearest possible, you know, time. So it's hard to tie that up, but we'll work on that after that initial meeting. After it, okay. Councillor King.
Just to say.
Okay.
Am I allowed to?
Yep, yes.
Well, it's not really a question, it's more of an observation because we had the similar issue last time when my police notice of motion was made, an amendment. And then not just myself, but also council and I believe the police struggled to interpret what that amendment meant and I wasn't able to explain it to them. And then I'm concerned about this amendment overcomplicating it again because meeting 13 councillors plus senior police, plus ministers, plus local members, state and federal, trying to organise a day to get all of them together before you consider this is, you know, going to prolong it again and make it, you know, take a lot longer than it needs to be. But I will reiterate, if this means that we can get it done, I'm happy to support it.
Okay, councillor Hill.
Just, I think in some comments made by councillor Jerd, I'd say I would agree that there, I feel that there is a push from the community for action to be taken on issues of crime and especially specifically vandalism. I just note that this is our second month now with a notice of motion in relation to sort of police and crime issues. And I appreciate the consistent approach from councillor King in pushing something that is close to, a concern close to him and to close to the community. I just don't want to see council move into a habit of continuously requesting separate individual reports on singular issues, especially for something which is as wide ranging as crime and policing in our LGA. This initial motion was very specific on vandalism and I feel like I didn't want to set into a theme of coming back, you know, perhaps I won't preempt any comment on what a future norm would be, but other councillors may have an issue with domestic violence, other councillors may have an issue with youth crime, other councillors may have an issue with speeding and pedestrian safety. And I don't think that individually addressing this with concern to putting the pressure on our staff to report individually back with these problems is a suitable way to go about doing business as a council. I would like us to be able to consider all options in the spirit of councillor King's notice of motion from last month in addressing the ways in which our council can assist New South Wales Police.
Okay, no further debate? Now we'll put the, what we've got on the screen forward for a vote, so all in favour? Sorry? Yeah, we're voting on the amendments. Yep. So councillor Grine, Hill, Lee, Palmowski, Pascoe, Savile and Watten, those against? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Judd, King, Madden, Mason? Carried? Yep. Okay, now that's carried, so now voting on the motion? So all in favour? Councillor Dixon, Grine, Hill, King, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmowski, Pascoe, Savile and Watten, those against? Councillor Judd, sorry, it's carried. And Harrington, sorry? Okay, Harrington? Okay. Okay. BN seven slash twenty twenty five, the report on unsealed roads and costs. So I'm moving that way, councillor Judd seconded, councillor King. Speaking councillor Judd?
I just want to quickly add a little bit to my thing first, that council requests a report from the general manager before, if it's possible, the next council meeting for the following information. If not, a reasonable time.
Okay, that's.
Just, I just.
It's unknown, apparently, yeah.
To know?
No, yeah.
Because I'm just, I just want to sort of know, like, it's not going to take six months or, you know, nine months to get, get it? If we get this passed, that's all.
Okay.
Could, however I word it, just so that it comes back as soon as possible.
How to word it? Director?
If that's possible.
It's a bit similar to the previous question earlier in the night, councillor Judd. Officers put into action the council resolution as quickly as we can.
Yeah, okay. So a bit obsolete making it, saying it again, okay, alrighty, so. My motion I've brought forward, there's a big reason for this. We have so many roads in our LGA that are unsealed roads that get graded and maintained and then there's a lot that don't. And I'd like to know how many roads we currently have that are unsealed and on the maintenance list, as well as those that are not. I received numerous emails from residents asking about the status of specific roads, inquiring when they will be fixed or if they are even on the list for maintenance. Having this information readily available will not only help us to address these concerns more effectively, but it also builds a trust within the community. Furthermore, it has been made clear by our director that without this information, it makes it quite difficult to add any roads to the maintenance list due to budgetary constraints. The director mentioned our budget for the road maintenance was three hundred and forty thousand and this might not be enough for the amount of roads that we have. With the budget discussions approaching and our four-year plan being developed, having a clear understanding of the status of our roads would be essential. It would guide us in making informed decisions and ensuring that resources are allocated fairly and effectively. Lastly, I wanted to highlight an important point, residents pay rates and taxes and it is crucial that we treat all residents equally. While, why, why should one resident have their road fixed while another is told no? We must work towards a fair system that ensures all voices are heard and all roads are maintained. As all residents pay their rates and taxes and therefore their road should be maintained as they legally do not own the road and therefore can't fix it unless they pay total cost to council. So I just want to say thank you, I hope that we can get support, but this is not just about one specific road, because I, you know, I've gone that avenue before and we might not be able to actually fix the road that in particular I would like to help. But I'd like to have this information. I've been speaking to the director about it and he's gave me some good information on the fact that it might not, it might not really be enough in the budget and it might be something that we might need to address by adding more. And that, and council can't do that without the support of councillors, so I feel like this information would be vital in knowing if this is a great opportunity to help residents. Sorry, I just rattled on a little. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I thought there was going to be other questions, sorry, I was a little slow to hit the button. Just initially to make the comment, I think that it's great to see that sort of a different, a motion coming to us, it's sort of all encompassing across the LGA. I know, I think all councillors who were new to the term last year, last term, you know, tried a different, a few notices of motion out and had to learn sort of how the process worked to go and I think I've, I appreciate the way I've been able to restructure my notices after that feedback from, from staff that we've had. I do note that some of the commentary provided by our staff notes that perhaps there's an alternate motion that could be moved to provide information, perhaps in a way that council staff are able to better format it to address the queries and the core concerns that councillor Judd has raised. Prior to noting any possible amendment, I'd just like to put a query to perhaps Mayor Watten. In the previous term of council, we had a committee, I think, that was sort of specifically focused on reviewing the council's roads. It was the Roads Review Committee, it had existed since before my time on council. And some of the, some of the concerns councillor Judd is raising in this notice of motion were sort of the focus of that committee's remit. I note that it was not suggested to be reconstituted in this term of council. Do you have any information on why that was the case or that that committee wasn't reformed?
Yeah, thank you councillor Hill, thank you for the question. So I think it's actually a valid thing that we could actually look to reconstitute that, that committee. I think it did add a lot of value, but that'd be a matter that we'd have to perhaps explore via the mechanisms at a later time. Yeah, it's, it's something that we definitely should reinstitute.
Thank you. And then in following, I guess, from that question, I think that my, my intent would be to move the alternate, alternate motion that's noted in the commentary as an amendment to this that's been moved by councillor Judd, so if I could, I'm happy to read that out if it's not provided, that the general manager provide a report to council on the unsealed road network review, including information on the unsealed road maintenance schedule. Council's council's asset management framework. Yep, yep, no worries, council's asset management framework and budget in line with the long-term financial plan. Oh, sorry, are you looking at me? Yep, apologies, I might have got ahead of you there. Just need a second or I think before I can further speak to the amendment?
Yep, okay, so just to confirm, we're, we're moving forward that alternate motion provided by the commentary in the report, so you seconded councillors of all?
Very good. And then just to speak briefly on it, I think the information provided in the commentary in the report on this motion, I think, is generally in line with the intent. I won't speak for councillor Judd, but reading her in motion, it seems to address some of those concerns. And I note that in the, in the months, late months of last year, council was able to receive some information and some briefing on some of the great work our asset teams are undertaking in the review of all of our assets and maintenances. And I think that continuing to provide that information to councillors and using that information to address the questions such as councillor Judd has is a suitable way to, to address the issues. I know myself, I've had a phone call in the past month from an individual who was on an unsealed road and has concerns about the way that they're able to access their property. And I'd like to be able to have information such as this as well to generally answer those questions that I receive from the community.
Okay, councillor Pascoe?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Just a quick question with the amendment. I feel like it generally summarises points one to five, but it doesn't encompass what grants are available to help. Is there a way to add that into the?
Yeah, you can propose an amendment.
An amendment to the amendment?
Effectively.
Because I feel like one through five is sort of generally encompassed in the providing a report on everything, but.
Have to accept?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to know what grants are available to.
Okay. Before, go back to you councillor Judd, just for closure, councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. There was one point I think we missed, so yeah, councillor Harrington, councillor Judd and myself have worked fairly closely with a resident that does have a road that's actually in shit condition, to be honest, let's face it. We did discuss there at the briefing meeting adding a greater than a hundred metres for the sake of would there be too many roads for the general manager actually to comment on? Can we add that councillor Hill into the amendment? Because I think there is going to be a lot of roads, less than a hundred metres as well, and I guess the length of the road is.
So to clarify, can you just clarify your, your?
Ah, so the general manager provides a report to council on unsealed roads network greater than a hundred metres, review including information on.
I might just need to, just, we'll go just a little bit slower. Okay. Yep.
The wording, because of the way the paragraph was broken up, perhaps it didn't read as well, so the initial amendment as per the report states that the general manager provide a report to council on the unsealed road network review. So as my understanding is that that is a review that's been undertaken in whole for the LGA, which perhaps will be able to take into account the different lengths of road that are being reviewed. So perhaps there's, maybe it's adding unnecessary complexity to the amendment. Because I imagine that that review's already a unit in of itself, that then they'll bring to us to say this is how this review is, is being undertaken and this is how it's progressing. And they've probably got some kind of mechanism in that already that outlines these are the roads in different lengths and different procedures. So perhaps it's a little unnecessary, maybe the director may be able to advise if that would be appropriate, I guess, or is it unnecessarily making the amendment unnecessary complex?
Director, are we overcomplicating?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Hill, the way it's written currently is, is overcomplicating the process. I think highlighting in the director's commentary was information that demonstrates that we are undertaking a review of the gravel roads or unsealed road network as part of our asset management policy review. So i- it's in train as we speak. If there is a need to focus on particular outcomes, we can do that as a, as a side focus on, on this review. I prefer that, if we could, to separate the two. But initially, the roads review will provide a clear indication on council's position and improvements that could be made to the road maintenance programme for unsealed roads as a result.
Okay, so just to clarify, we don't need to add that hundred metre section in there, because it's all, it'll all be included in the holistic report? So, okay. Oh, sorry councillor Madden, you didn't, did you?
Thanks, Mayor Watten. We need to put a timeframe on this too, I believe, where this, honestly, this particular road has dragged on and on and on, and I'd be happy to put, first of all, the director, how long would it take to have this report, the general manager, sorry?
So you're looking to articulate or, or confirm timeframes?
Yes.
I guess it has to be, it, it, I don't want to speak of half the staff, but in terms of workflow and everything like that, would anyone like to comment, director of works?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Madden, we're well advanced with the review. You're several months in, it's a fairly lengthy exercise, just under four hundred kilometres of unsealed roads. We've got the existing policy which we're reviewing concurrently with that as well, which highlights certain unsealed roads that are exempt from maintenance and or resale works. So as part of that, we're compiling that together and putting a prioritised list. We then have to ensure that we can sustainably maintain those roads, so they have to feed into the long-term financial plan. The ability for us to complete that works could be anywhere between three to six months.
Yeah, right, okay.
So councillor Judd, just before we go, no further debate? So, to, to close? Oh, beg your pardon? Yep. Any question?
Because I'm quite happy with the director's commentary in the alternative motion, but I just want to, and I'm glad that councillor Pascoe got, got on there before me to say about the grants, because I wanted to make sure that was on there. I want to make it sure that this is going to have the roads that are currently not maintained as well. That's all I want to make sure, otherwise I'm happy to support the, the motion.
Okay, yep, it does. Yep, it will. Okay, so now we'll now vote on that amendment? So, put the matter forward. Yep, we've got the amendment up on screen. Put forward for a vote, all in favour? It's unanimous? And put the motion forward, amendments now become the, the motion, put it forward for a vote, those in favour? It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to BN eight slash twenty twenty five, the Pittman Quarry proposal, SSD seven six two one zero two seven one. Can someone moving that way? Councillor Palmowski, seconded?
Motion please?
Yep.
I'd just like to add a third point, please. The proponent to host meaningful community consultation for openness and transparency and provision of information.
Can you just repeat that last, last second?
Um, for openness and transparency and provision of information.
Okay, director?
Can I just suggest that the dot point three is beyond the power of council? You can request the proponent to do that, you can't tell him he has to do that.
Okay. Do you?
That the pro, the proponent is requested to hold meaningful.
The council request, yeah, yeah, that sounds better, thank you.
So just on that actual amendments, someone second councillor Lee? Okay, any further, any discussion? General manager?
Can we ask that council write to the Department of Planning and have the department request that the applicant provide? That's their regulatory authority in the body that, that requires applicants in those circumstances to do.
Yeah, I'm happy to have that.
Okay, we're happy with that wording?
Yeah.
Okay. So would you like to speak to that councillor Palmowski?
Yes, am I speaking to the three points? Yes, okay. So Pittman Quarry is a planned state significant development to be situated in Eldersley, which is in Singleton Council. But it will be, it will significantly impact those residents of Cessnock City Council. So we, it's predicted. those residents of Sessnock City Council. So we, it's predicted to have a hundred and ten laden trucks per day, as well as delivery trucks, which will be approximately one truck every six minutes. And I'm sure you can all agree that that is quite significant for a small town like Brankston. Not to mention, our roads are not constructed to support the sustained weight and frequency of our of those heavy vehicles, with the lack of safety, safety infrastructure, such as traffic lights or roundabouts also that will be required for such an increase in traffic. The tracks plan a path down Eldersley Road, which becomes quite narrow, with two cars having difficulty passing, let alone with over a hundred trucks per day. There is no footpath on Sessnock City Council area of Eldersley Road, forcing pedestrians, children included, who are travelling from local schools and to bus to and from bus stops, forcing them onto the road to continue their commute. The route will need to take a left turn onto Eldersley Road, onto the New England Highway, which during peak hours is quite heavy with local traffic. They will then need to take a right turn onto the New England Highway again, heading towards the Hunter Expressway. This is an already known busy and dangerous intersection with frequent accidents. Both intersections lack safety infrastructure, as I've mentioned. Moreover, the roads will require increased funding for maintenance and repairs from council, as the frequency of heavy vehicles on rural roads is likely to increase lead to increased maintenance costs for the council, prolonged disruptions to local traffic due to required road repairs and high risk of accidents and vehicle damage. There are a number of residents who have raised their concerns around the increased presence of heavy vehicles posing a severe safety risk to the community, in particular for those for the children of the community on their commute. Thank you.
Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. This proposal presents or potentially presents some serious implications for our community, for our infrastructure, for our local environment and the safety of our people. For those reasons, I strongly support the motion that councillor Palmaski has put forward tonight. As mentioned, there's up to a hundred and ten laden truck movements per day, although some media reports this week have that as high as a hundred and sixty laden truck movements per day. These roads were never designed to handle such frequent heavy vehicle movements. And this increase of traffic could have significant negative effects on road safety, on maintenance costs and on community wellbeing. The sustained weight and volume of heavy vehicles will accelerate wear and tear on our rural roads. It's going to increase our maintenance costs for the council and for ratepayers. There will be frequent road repairs that will cause disruptions and inconvenience for residents. There'll be greater risks of road damage and safety hazards, especially on these roads, which as councillor Palmaski mentioned, don't have the adequate traffic control infrastructure and they're quite narrow in a number of parts. The increased heavy vehicle movement poses major safety concern, particularly for children walking to and from school or to their bus stops. This is on a school bus stop route. Cyclists and local drivers navigating their narrow roads I've just mentioned. And also emergency response vehicles, which could be delayed due to heavy traffic congestion. As we all know, safety doesn't take a holiday. So for these reasons, I fully support council making a formal and proactive submission objecting to the quarry proposal.
Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If I could just ask the director, because in the director's commentary, there's a section that notes that there has not actually been a development application lodged for this as of yet. Is it normal for someone to submit, for a council to submit, uh, submission in opposition to something that hasn't been lodged yet?
Give that to manager? GM?
Sorry, thank you. The the initial process for state significant development is scoping report. You you put that to the the department and then they'll then give you what's called the secretaries, the SEES, so the secretaries environmental assessment requirements. Part of that process is the department should be notifying the relevant agencies to get feedback from those agencies, both state and local authorities, to then be part of that SEES document. The SEES document, dot points about the matters that the applicant has to address in the preparation of their EIS. That document's been provided to the department and been issued. We became aware that we hadn't been duly notified. So we've, we have notified and that we need to be notified as a as an authority, not that we have any regulatory powers over the application itself. It, to your specific question, it's not normally a matter, of course, that you would submit an objection or any submission until the application has been lodged. State significant development applications, when we get notified, we will then notify councillors that the application has now been made and we are notified and there is a submission period. And we would be putting together a submission, raising those points that councillor Palmaski and others, and we would notify council of that submission having been made to that effect.
Councillor King?
Thank you, director. So that says to me that this is a little bit premature. I do accept the notion behind this. But I think I would like to defer this until a submission is required after the DA's actually been lodged and then pursued at that point in time. If I can move a procedural motion to defer this at a later stage, please?
Yep, so move move procedural. So someone second councillor Jerod? Okay, we'll now put that forward for a vote to defer. Okay, so those in favour deferring? Councillor Dixon, Harrington, Jerod, King, Mason, Pascoe and Wharton, those against. Councillor Grine, Hill, Lee, Madden, Palmaski, Saval. Defer's been carried. Well. Yep. So we defer that for the next available meeting. Now, moving on to. Oh, beg your pardon. Yeah, not next available meeting, to when the actual application's lodged. Now, moving on to. Yeah, council reports. So for the sake of time, because we really need to get to this confidential confidential session. So I'll give the highlights and I do want to table mine. However, we will start off with councillors first. So councillor Palmaski?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On the, on March eighth, I attended Brankston Community Hall for Sessnock City Council celebration of seniors festival. This was a fabulous event held in collaboration with Miss Jade's Music School, whose very talented students performed outstanding musical performances from singing piano and violin. There were also other marvelous performances from other community groups and singers who even successfully encouraged the whole room attendees to join in. The event was, as always, very well organised by caretaker Helen and her incredible team. And the event served as a fundraiser to raise funds for Miss Jade's Music School in giving back to those struggling with financial difficulty in access to music lessons and other needs such as instrument repairs. The Brankston Community Hall received a grant from Sessnock City Council for this event and I wanted, and they wanted to pass on their thanks by way of a certificate, which I have here with me, which I'd like to pass on to council. Congratulations to Brankston Community Hall and Miss Jade's Music School for a successful afternoon.
That's fantastic. And really quickly, I love the work that that music academy, everything Miss Jade's Music School does for the community and obviously Helen at Brankston Hall, just salt of the earth people out there at Brankston. So next report, we've got councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So as councillors or some councillors are aware that I've tried to inform as many as I could, I attended a meeting on Friday, the fourteenth of March twenty twenty five at two PM at the local police station here in Sessnock, with the mayor, a state member, a federal member and senior police officials. The meeting was convened as a result of my writing to the minister of police on several key issues relating to policing in the community, including crime statistics, police staffing levels, crime prevention strategies and local law enforcement activities. This, the discussions, I believe was productive and it highlighted several important aspects of police work and community involvement, one of which was crime statistics. The police presented an update on current crime statistics for the area. A point that stood out for me is that we have the third highest rate of vehicle theft in the state. The crime rates had some fluctuations, but overall remained stable. Then a point of discussion was in the relationship between population growth and availability of police officers. It was clarified that police staffing numbers are primarily determined by reported crime statistics rather than population forecasts. This means that if crime incidents are underreported, it may lead to fewer resources allocated to the area. And as a result, it is crucial that all incidents, no matter how minor they may seem, be reported to the police in order to accurately reflect the crime levels in the community. This in turn could potentially lead to an increase in police staffing allocation. And then the police emphasised the importance of reporting old crimes, like I just mentioned, regardless of their perceived severity. They noted that the community's engagement in reporting crime is crucial for accurate data, which I've already said. Police have designated crime prevention officer, which they told me in that meeting, because I discussed vandalism with them, or I brought it up as part of the conversation as well, to, so they have a police designated crime prevention officer that is directly working with local organisations, or that's his job, to create and implement strategies to prevent crime. I've also asked on the topic of trail bikes. So first I asked whether the police are allowed to get on their own trail bike. So the topic of trail bikes was discussed with clarification that trail bikes are not authorised for general use, sorry, for general police use in the community. They're only allowed for land searches in specific cases. Then I also brought up neighbourhood watch groups, because I've noticed there is been some talk in the community about neighbourhood watch groups. And they are important part of community safety. The police confirmed that they are willing to actively support and work with these groups to enhance local vigilance and reduce crime. Councillors are encouraged to continue fostering these community led initiatives alongside police. Then finally, the meeting underscored a key point to secure more police staff for the area. The data needs to support it. This means that it's crucial for our community members to report each crime. By doing so, the crime statistics will be more accurately reflected. And then I'll just end with saying that the recommendations from police, from my interpretation, was that what council can do to help with policing in the area was to promote crime reporting, support for neighbourhood watch groups and initiatives against vandalism. Thank you. That's all from me.
Hey, thank you councillor King. Just noting councillor Dixon, you've got your your button on. Do you want to speak? Okay. Yep, no worries. Yeah, I might just follow the the chain here. So councillor Lee, and then we'll go to you. Okay, councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief and just let the report speak for itself. But attended a number of wonderful events as part of our two thousand and twenty five seniors festival. The one thing that I will take the time to note is just the efforts of our two thousand and twenty four senior citizen of the year Delma White. And during the two weeks of the festival, Delma attended a staggering eighteen events as the two thousand and twenty five ambassador. And she informs me she does this all on four hours' sleep each night. And I think that only strengthens what we all know, if you've ever met Delma, and that is that she's an extremely worthy recipient of the senior citizen of the year award.
Okay, thank you councillor. She certainly is. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a very quick report. So on Friday, the fourteenth of March, I attended Sessnock Leeds Club to join the Sessnock Women's Women Connect Network Night. I just want to say that the the night was a very successful, inspiring event, effectively celebrating International Women's Day. The event highlighted the achievements of local women, fostering community support and provided valuable network opportunities.
That's great. And look, I'll just speed through mine, just for the sake of time. So I'll I'll table the document that can be incorporated into the the minutes later. So eighteenth of February, the Hunter Valley Wine Tourism Alliance Meeting, sorry, was discussed about re instituting Stomp Festival in some way, shape or form, which was great. Discussed the fourteen million dollar grant for Apex Park. Then I've recap the Canberra visit there as well, with regards to Frejden and the airport coming up, hopefully. So then the Hunter Transmission Project Social Impact Statement Interview was held on the twentieth of February, which I attended and provided the information they wanted, and so I gave them. Twelfth of March, we met with the state government to further discuss the reactivation of current and former mining lands, create jobs arranged by the JO, which was great to be a part of. Thirteenth of March, the affordable housing induction was very interesting. A lot to talk to all councillors about this, because there's some interesting things that we could discuss that may be of value to our community. Obviously, the fourteenth of March, there was the meeting with the police, which councillor King's covered. And then the sixteenth of March was a very inspiring meeting. Upper Yanggo Land Hallers Association, it's a community resilience information presentation. They are the gold standard of community, community resilience. Want to give a big shout out to councillor staff member Wilson Boucher. Fantastic job that she does in the community. And as I mentioned, I will table all these, I'll provide the words and documents and we can add that to the agenda, or the ministry, I say. Now. Yes, now we have to extend the meeting time. We're at nine fifty six, so. Yeah. So we'll go ten thirty. So. Yep. Seconded councillor Saval. All in favour? It's unanimous. Okay, we've got ten thirty. Okay. Yep. Now, just move a motion now to to go into confidential session to discuss report number CC sixteen twenty twenty five. Move Saval, seconded councillor King. All in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, so we'll just need to ask the gallery to wait outside, please. Yeah, I can read it. Yeah, have we got the word? You put it up here? I can't see the whole thing. If you want, yeah. I just can't see it. It's not working. All right, hand it over to your director.
Thank you Mayor Wotton. In relation to report number CC162025, authorisation to purchase property adjacent to a council facility, council resolved that council delegate to the general manager authority to purchase lot 34, sorry, lot 4 DP 835450, known as 69 Vincent Street, to facilitate the future expansion of Sasso Library. The council delegate to the general manager authority to enter negotiations for purchase of the property within 10% of the recommendation assessed over this report plus GST. The council authorises the general manager authority to execute the transfer documentation of the purchase between Cessnock City Council and the private property owner. The council authorises use of funds from development contributions planned for purchase and fit out of the property and that on transfer of the ownership, council resolves to classify the land being lot 4 DP 835450 as operational land. Now do you close the meeting?
Okay, well, with that all being said, now declare the meeting closed. Thank you.